Okay, Mr. Marshall. Amherst Media is with us. The attendees are coming in. It is six thirty-five. You have a quorum of the board. I do believe we're good to go.
All right. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board meeting of January twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five. My name is Doug Marshall and as Chair of the Amherst Planning Board. I'm calling this meeting to order at six thirty-five P M. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty-twenty-one and extended by chapter two of the Acts of twenty-twenty-three. This planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is accessible on the meeting agenda posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting. Or go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. Word members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Colton.
I tried the spacebar, but it didn't work. I'm here.
Fred Hartwell.
Fred Hartwell is present.
Lawrence Clutz.
I am present.
Jesse Major.
Present.
Hi, Doug Marshall. I'm present. And I do not see Johanna Newman at this point, and we know that Karen Winter will be absent, so we will proceed with the folks that are here. Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please, please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment, and I will call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. While the comments may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the planning board chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views typically for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the planning board chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. Okay, time is nine thirty-eight. And we'll go to the first item on the agenda, which is review and approval of minutes drafted by our hardworking staff. Minutes we have in the packet for this meeting are from November twentieth of last year. Did anyone have any comments on these minutes? Okay, I guess they were perfect. Does anybody want to make a motion to accept these minutes? Jesse.
Sure, I'm going to accept the minutes.
Thank you. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bruce. One more call for any comments from the board? No comments. All right, we will go ahead and do a roll call vote for acceptance of the November twentieth minutes. Starting with you, Bruce.
I vote to approve.
And Fred.
I vote to approve.
Lawrence.
I vote to approve.
Jesse.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So that is five votes in favor and two members absent. Motion passes and those minutes are accepted. Thank you all. Time now is six forty. We'll go to the public comment period. As I stated earlier, this is the time for comments about topics that are not showing up later on the agenda. So anything to do with the Amity Drive, Amity Street and University Drive project, or the University Drive overlay, those comments should be held until later. Does anyone in the public want to make a comment at this time? While I wait for your hands to go up, I will read the names of the public attendees I can see on Zoom here. I see we have nine members of the, nine members of the public at the moment. Arthur Haskins, Barry Roberts, Christine Brestrop, Gail Flood, Jonathan Salvon, Jay Smith, Ken Rosenthal, Mara Keen, and Tom Reedy. So I have yet to see any hands come up from the public. So I am going to conclude that there are no public comments to be offered this evening. All right, in that case, we will go on. It is now six forty-one, and we will go to the first of our public hearings. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding SPR twenty-two-four dash eleven, U Drive Amity LLC, located at University Drive and Amity Street. Request a site plan review approval under section three point three-two-five of the zoning bylaw to redevelop existing commercial space into an eighty-five residential unit and commercial space mixed-use development, including parking, landscape, lighting, and stormwater infrastructure, located at parcels thirteen B dash eighteen, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and fifty-four, located in the BL zoning district. This hearing is continued from August seventh, September eighteenth, November sixth, and December eighteenth of last year. Before I ask for board member disclosure, I will just state for the record that Johanna Newman joined us at the beginning of that intro to the hearing. So time is now six forty-three. It was probably six forty-one or six forty-two.
I noted it as six forty-one, if that's okay.
Okay, that sounds good, Pam.
And then I have one other question for Mr. Reedy. Mr. Reedy, is Jonathan Salvon part of your application team tonight?
He is, Pam. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Board members, is there any disclosures? Are there any disclosures you need to make for the discussion of this topic? I do not see any, so we will go on to the applicant presentation. Welcome, Mr. Reedy.
Thanks for having us, Mr. Chair. For the record, Tom Reedy, Attorney at law with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of U Drive Amity and its application for a site plan approval for a mixed-use development at the corner of University Drive and Amity Street here in Amherst. With me, Principal of U Drive Amity, Barry Roberts, Site Architect Jonathan Salvon from Kuhn Riddle. So just to refresh everybody's memory, we had proposed an eighty-five unit, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-bed, one-hundred-and-eighty-six parking space, mixed-use project over two buildings on this site. I was at a previous meeting of the planning board and gave a preview of coming attractions because once those two buildings were going to have what's called a podium build, and so they'd be part steel and part wood. There were going to be five or six stories, depending upon what was happening with your overlay district and also potential variance process we were going through. Because part of the podium build was to have parking, interior parking. And so Barry, in his due diligence, was getting pricing from all, you know, for materials and labor, and the pricing for the steel came back at a, at a point that just frankly made the project infeasible as designed. It was, I think, maybe ten million dollars for the steel. And that was now before any additional tariffs come into play when we actually have to order the steel. And so at that time, I want to say it was in around November, Barry made a decision to pivot to redesign the project to, to create a single building, and I'll share my screen so you can see. I'll probably show Jonathan's plan first, just so you get a sense of what it's going to look like. And, and I have the other files from the, the previous iteration. If anybody wants to say, well, what was it and what is it? I somewhat skipped over that because I think it's important to see what we're actually proposing. And so the proposal is for a single building. That's five stories. It's going to be all wood. It is seventy-seven units, two-hundred-and-twenty-four beds, and then about twelve-thousand-two-hundred square feet of commercial space on the first floor facing University Drive. And so and it's supported by a hundred-and-sixty parking spaces. And the, the parking ratio of the two-fifty-nine to one-eighty-six is the same as two-hundred-and-twenty-four to one-sixty. So we're still hitting that same parking ratio that, that Barry feels comfortable with. Talk a little bit about the past project. Just simply, you may recall it had a, an L shape similar to this that stopped probably about here. And then there was a second building running back in this direction. Both of those buildings had, as I had said, a podium, they were podium built, and so they had parking on the first floor. This eliminates any internal parking, so all of the parking is going to be exterior, so site parking. One of the other, I'd call it benefits of this project is you may recall that we had three curb cuts, where we had one on Amity Street, one about here on University Drive, and then a third, probably an exit only, but a third one a little bit further down on the south. We've eliminated that curb cut in total and pushed the full-axis curb cut down towards the south. So now there are only two curb cuts. And lastly, before I get into walking you through the site plan, we've reduced the environmental impact of the project as well. And so where we had, I want to say it was maybe thirty-nine thousand square feet of, of proposed buffer alteration, which is about a ten-thousand-square-foot increase over existing. We're now only proposing thirty-three thousand square feet of buffer impact, which is about a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot increase over existing. And the mitigation was thirty-thousand square feet. Now it's thirty-seven thousand square feet. So it, it's moved in the right direction. To give a little bit of context of permitting, we're in front of you now, hoping to get a site plan approval. We were in front of the Conservation Commission. They were, what I would say, is ready to approve the project. And we, we, we're, we've redesigned the project, and so I've submitted that information to the Conservation Agent. She's getting the abutters list because we've agreed to renotice the abutters, and we'll be on, I believe, February twelfth for hopefully their issuance of an order of conditions. We do have a variance on this project from the Zoning Board of Appeals. The variance allows increased density, and it also allows us to go, go up to fifty-seven feet in height. We are active, we are asking, we've submitted an application to modify that variance, which we have to because they approve the variance based on that previous site plan, so we have to bring this site plan to them. And then instead of fifty-seven feet, we've asked for fifty-nine-point-five feet. And the, the reason really is based on how Amherst calculates its building height and that this is a corner lot. And so you've got University Drive, and you also have Amity Street. They both have varying elevations. You need to measure it from average grade on the street side. And so between that and the, the high groundwater on the site and to make our stormwater system work, we have to, we have to raise the elevation of the first floor just slightly. So to step back, planning board's site plan approval, Conservation Commission order of conditions, and then Zoning Board of Appeals variance modification. Ideally, we get all those approvals this month or in February. And then appeals period passes, and Barry is taking the, the building down at four-twenty-two Amity Street in the spring, starting site work, which is going to likely coincide with the town's work on the roundabout, and having a foundation starting to pour in the fall for a delivery of this building in August of twenty-twenty-six. So pipe timeline, we'd ask for whatever help you can give, but that's kind of high level where we are, where we've been, where we are, and where we'd like to go. I'll stop there for any procedural questions. Otherwise, I'll turn to the site plan and walk everyone through the site plan.
Thanks, Tom. I think you can continue.
So I'll share my screen for the site plan. And so what you see on this first page is aerial overlay. You can see twenty-five thirty-five University Drive under and four-twenty-two Amity Street. This gives you a sense of where the building will be in the context of the existing site. We actually, we have some other plans, but they get a little busy, so we won't go there unless the board requests it. You see your wetlands to the west and to the south. You see your buffer zones. And then you can see, here's your parking, and here's your access. So full-axis curb cut. And then full-axis curb cut in this area here. I'll scroll down. That's an existing conditions plan. This is a construction demolition and erosion control plan. And then this is the site plan. So we'll stay on this page for a little bit. Again, L-shaped building, about a thirty-thousand-square-foot footprint. Hundred-and-sixty parking spaces, twenty-four of them are proposed to be compact in this area. Internal, how should I say, external parking, but interior to the site. So we've pulled the building up to the street and then tucked the parking behind. We've got a ten-foot-wide path up to this point. We cannot go farther. There is an easement. So if, if you're familiar, and I've said this plenty of times, but University Drive has a access restriction, which allowed no more than, I think, six curb cuts onto it. For seventy, University Drive, Barry went and petitioned town meeting and got it changed to allow an additional curb cut there. What folks did on the westerly side of University Drive was, was put that access road. That access road from this, which is now Mass Alternative Care, they have an easement to access Amity Street. And so what we've done is we've left this portion of that access drive available where they can, through going through the site, access Amity Street. And so it doesn't frustrate the intent or purpose of that easement, and it allows them to continue to use it. Practically, I don't know if they will, but that's why we've done what we've done here and not extended that ten-foot-wide sidewalk. At some point in the future, if this development were to be acquired or to seek redevelopment, and the town could have them release that easement, I think we'd be happy to put in that ten-foot-wide path continuing to their property. We're just unable to do so. We've done the title exam. We've talked to our title insurer. This is what we're stuck with. So that's why you'll see it doesn't extend all the way there. What you'll also see is a bus, a proposed bus stop turnout, and this was done in consultation with the, the town's engineer and superintendent of the DPW. So Guilford and Jason had asked for a bus pull-off, and this was the most appropriate place to put it for far enough from the roundabout. It may need to be extended in length a little bit. But this is the general location of the turnout. And so the building complies with the setbacks of the new overlay district. Again, like I said, it's, it's five stories, and we'll get into the architectural details a little bit. And you've got your parking spaces full axis, and then your parking spaces here. I will show the stormwater system, and so there's an existing detention basin similar to what there was before in this southwest corner. We're retaining that. You've got catch basins, proprietary system, which ultimately discharges into this drainage area, and then also discharges to this drainage area to the west. If you're familiar with the site, to the west is wetlands. And so what we're doing is collecting, treating, and then discharging that water in the same path that it was going before. Barry has agreed to install a pretty sizable thirty-foot, thirty-four-foot-long box culvert on this side of the site. And then also to clean up, if you're familiar, there's a bunch of catanine tails over in this area. It, this takes essentially all the drainage from the center of town, and so we've sized it appropriately to allow that water to flow through pipes and then open air under this access and then west into Hadley.
Tom, is the, is the Hadley border shown on this, or is it farther west?
It's further west. There's, I could probably bring up the GIS, but I know I want to.
That's all right. I just, you know, it kind of goes at a diagonal to University Drive, and I didn't know if it showed up here. Okay.
No, and there's, there's a bit of and I've done the title on it for other clients who were looking at the land over the border in Hadley, and, and the title's a mess. But there's a sliver of, sliver of land here in Amherst owned by whoever owns the balance of this, which has gone through. I mean, you'd have to go through the heirs of that person. And so it's not just right into Hadley.
That's fine.
Another utility plan. I don't know that folks necessarily care about that, and then we've got the rest of the detail sheets. What I'll do is I'll go over to the architectural just to show you that, and then we can always come back to the let me get this up. We can always come back to the site plan. And so I have shown you the, the rendering. We'll go back to that after this one, and then we'll do landscaping, and then I'll probably stop talking because you're sick of it. High level and quickly, here is the, the footprint, and here's what it's going to look like from a floor plan standpoint. If you recall, the previous proposal had parking here. Those have been replaced by units, so which has allowed us to essentially eliminate that other building. Along University Drive, you've got your office or retail space taking up essentially all of that area which fronts on University Drive. Your bedroom mix, so of the seventy-seven units, you've got five one-bedrooms, thirty-two bedrooms, nine three-bedrooms, and thirty-three four-bedrooms. When you look at the size of the, the units, they're sizable. You know, you've got fourteen-hundred-plus square feet for a four-bedroom, nine-hundred-thousand-square-feet for a two-bedroom, et cetera. We've got the EV parking spaces identified here on the, on the plan. And then these are eight EV prewired parking spaces. The electrical service will be in this back corner here. When we get to the rendering, I'll show you how it's screened because on the exterior is where the meter bank will be, but we're, we've appropriately screened that. So this is the first floor. We've got amenity space, amenity space. And I'll go up to the upper floors. Again, amenity space here, a fitness center. We've got, you know, four bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, all what I'd say is good-sized units. Two, three, four is similar, and then the fifth story is a little bit different just because, as we'll see from the rendering, it steps back a little bit, and you've got some exterior space here and then some exterior space here. So these will be, these ends will be four stories with like a, essentially a rooftop patio. So here's the, here are the elevations, not rendered, but the elevation so that you'll be able to see, you know, you've got the screening of the rooftop mechanicals right up at the top here, flat roof, five stories, fenestrations, bump outs to try to reduce the massing. And then you've got that fourth story with that fifth story, we'll call it deck. And then same thing, you know, north elevation. This is looking from, say, the university. And then west elevation, and this is where you see the meter bank, and I'll show you how it's, we think it's, it's appropriately screened. And then this is that corner elevation with the, with the majority of glass. And these are the inside elevation. So if you're in the parking area, this is what it's going to look like from, from inside.
Tom, while we're on these, could you describe what materials are being depicted by the, the red, the white, and the yellow?
Sure. And I'm going to ask Jonathan, phone a friend, maybe to describe the materials.
Friendly. The, the red and the yellow tones, those are two proposed different colors of brick. And then the lighter tone is really intended to be gray, but it reads as a white here, and that is a siding product, a metal siding product.
Thank you.
The, I should note that the screen that we'll put up for the mechanical equipment will be made out of that same metal siding product.
Sorry to interrupt you, Tom.
No, no, that's quite all right. I'll bring back the renderings. Just so we can, now that we've walked through the site a little bit more and seen the architectural elevations, here's the rendering. So as Jonathan noted, you've got the screening of the rooftop mechanicals up there and set back from the surrounding area. You've got building bump outs, fenestrations, plenty of windows. Ten-foot-wide path leads down to this access driveway here, and then I'll show you some other angles. This is from the northeast looking southwest, so where the roundabout, this, this renders the roundabout too. So this is looking at the building. This area here, that's the screening we're proposing for that electrical bank. You've got, look, from the south looking north, so forty, University Drive would be over my right shoulder if I was standing here looking at towards the northwest where the building is, and then this one obviously is from the interior of the site back where that drainage area is looking towards northeast. And then this one is a rendering of one of the top floor units. I think this one is in the northwest corner. And you'll see this is one that has that outdoor space and the views from the, from the fifth story, and just to give you a sense of the, the finishes that this building will have. Okay. Couple more. And I'll go to the landscape plan quickly. So this is the landscape plan. As you can expect, a pretty robust landscape plan. You'll see, and I haven't even counted all of the number of trees and shrubs and perennials, but you know, a quick look, you've got twenty-eight and nine and five and seven and ten and nine and thirteen and fourteen, so just to give you a sense of the trees on the site. For landscape shrubs, one, two, three, maybe four hundred of those, perennials, at least three hundred of those, et cetera. So you'll see that it's a very robust landscape plan. The trees are identified by these larger circles. We are keeping, there's a willow back here. We're, we're doing our best and planning to keep that willow in this area. Looking to supplement some street trees along University Drive. And then this is a bio-retention and pollinator habitat here, and then we've got some upland buffer zone plantings here. We've got some rounded stones in here, and then wetland enhancement area, and then this is all native basin bottom plantings and then other upper meadow plantings, we call it. So a very robust plan. We've worked with the landscape architect to make sure that they are, we'll say like heat island sensitive, just because of their proximity to the parking area, and they can all take the, the the heat. And I think that's probably good for the landscape. And I think that's probably good for the landscape plan and I'll show you one more. This one, Mr. Marshall is for you, it's one of the things you would ask for at the last. Meeting that we were at and this is just a a side elevation cut through the building to show. Uh you know, University Drive uh. Existing sidewalk, that tree zone, that multipurpose path. And then the proximity to the building and what that building will look like um. And this is looking from the north. And obviously you got your rooftop mechanicals up here with the screen of the rooftop mechanicals. Um I should mention trash will be internal. Uh and so there will be a trash room or trash rooms plural with in the building, it's something Barry's done at uh one University Drive South. It keeps the site really uh clean and and neat and he's looking to do the same thing here. Um. As far as traffic, just somewhat quickly, uh we had a letter that we had submitted from the last iteration of this project. That suggested there was no detrimental impact, no uh overburdening of the surrounding roadway. I reached back out to Stan Tech who is a traffic engineer, told them the updated plan and they said, well, if it wasn't. Bad before, it's certainly not going to be bad, I'm paraphrasing, but that that's essentially what they had said, I had provided that email. To you, to Pam, uh I think maybe yesterday. And then. I suppose I can show. I'll show it, uh the the lighting plan, it's a little small on the screen, but at least it'll give you a sense of where. The lights are, uh I had also submitted the cut sheets for a lot of these. Um so if you're you're curious about what they'll look like, I can always bring it up again, I don't want to belabor it. But we've got um there's no light trespass, there's no light bleed, it's it's a big sight. Um so you're not going to have any issues with light trespass. There will be sufficient illumination of the site, you've got larger. Um you know, pole lights at these areas here identified in the black. Same thing, sorry about having that pop up and then you've got other lower pole lights here. And then you've got um essentially uh reset ceiling lights in these areas. Here, 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 here. And then you've got almost tan lights above the doorways in those areas. Uh above the doorways and so like I said, we can get into. Um you can see the heights called out as well, you know, eighteen feet and some twelve feet and others eighteen feet over here. And obviously you know that the the balance is you want lower um. If you want lower fixtures, you need more of them. You if you have a few higher fixtures, they're able to illuminate a greater swath. You know, this site, again, given how the building is oriented, the building's going to be blocking a lot of that light. Uh and we just want to focus that light in this back area here, so. I think that's high probably greater than high level, um I don't know Barry or Jonathan, if you've got anything to add, please feel free. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
So Jonathan and Barry, do you want to add anything or shall we go on to the discussion?
I'm good, I'm doing a good job, he always does.
I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I don't have anything special to say.
Okay. Um. Tom, since I don't. I I just want to ask a few kind of check off a few things right up front. Um the EV chart, the EV spaces at the parking lot. Is are each of those that are. On the north side against the building. Uh are all of those where a an EV charging station is located connection or is that just. Signed for EV vehicles?
Tommy, you want me to ch- chime in here a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, if you want to, I was just gonna bring up the plan, but yeah, if you want to.
Uh so uh Tom didn't mention it, but you know, this will be. One of the first projects in town that will be going through the opt-in code, so these those eight will be. Fully ready for use, so they'll they'll have signage, but there will also be a a a charging station between each pair of. Um parking spaces for the ones closest to the building on the opposite side of the driveway, those those will be wired, but they won't necessarily be. Um. You know, the the charging station itself won't be there yet.
All right.
And that's a that the number here is dictated by what we have to do to meet uh the opt-in code specific.
Okay, I think Jonathan just froze.
Yeah.
Okay, you're back. Okay, how about bike racks? Do we have bike racks?
We do, I don't know if they are shown on the plan, if not, I will make sure that they are shown.
They were, Tom, if you go go back to to Phil's, unless he took them off, I I know where they are.
Okay, let me go back and then you can.
And it's possible in the redesign, he lost some of them, but in in the in the kind of uh center of RV on the back side, there is a large stretch of them.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and then on the front side of the building, I think there's one or two sets. Okay, just just one set, there's a set of loops by that that double set of doors, yeah.
Okay. All right, um. From the uh the way the units are configured, is it correct that this is not really targeted at families? Since I don't, since all the bedrooms are basically the same size.
Great question, um I don't know that. It's. How do I answer this? I don't know that it's necessarily targeted at families or not families, I think. We expect students to be living here, there are going to be affordable units and I think Barry's mix in the projects that he has. That he has families, right, and so I I don't, when I say like, oh, it's not targeted towards, just because we're not designing a larger. Let's say primary and then smaller secondary. Um I think this is a function of the layout, I I would expect that families would still look to reside here.
Okay. And that's been, I guess, Barry's experience with other projects that even though. The bedrooms are all the same size, families do occupy them.
Yeah, and I think seventy University Drive is probably a great example because I think Barry, it's like fifty percent students and then fifty percent. Pick, right, graduates, professionals, uh folks with kids, et cetera.
Okay. Um. Wait, I asked about exterior materials earlier and as far regarding the uh metal siding that Jonathan described. Um it looked like the corner, the outside corner is all metal panel. Yeah, rather than brick, which seemed a little bit inconsistent or or undesirable, just that you might. Treat that corner a little more. Uh more elegantly, I guess I'll use that word, um Jonathan, is that? Do I, am I reading that right? Is that metal panel? You're you're muted.
Of course I am, um. There is a section of metal panel in the center right at that corner, but it's kind of bookended by two sections of brick. I wouldn't be opposed to to looking at that and brick. Um. It it was just another way of trying to break down the mass and scale of of this fairly large building into into different kind of textural pieces. Um but uh.
Well, I guess, I guess, when you say metal panel, I can think of gee, is it, is it? Aluminum siding or is it large panels or you know?
Hey, this would be a larger scale panel, we 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 can provide a.
Residential feel or does this feel like a kind of? Major, not quite institutional, but you know, a major. It's it's a upgraded panel from something you'd put on your house.
Yes, the intent is that it would be upgraded from what would be on your house.
Okay.
We we can provide a sample.
All right, well, I guess, I guess that that corner just seems like something you might want to. I mean, to the extent you have time to think about it some more, um I think it might be something that could be more. Uh more prominently, you know, detailed. Treated as a very prominent element that should be kind of the high point of the exterior. Um on the site plan or or on the the planting plan, are there any invasive species like eumamus or burning bush or? Um.
No, everything's native, as far as what we're planting, we would only be planting native species.
Okay. And um and is all the lighting dark sky compliant?
It is.
All right, and uh do you expect to get an updated traffic letter?
I think the email is is what we're expecting.
Okay, all right, um. Pam, do you, in your experience, is that email uh adequate to assure us of the? Traffic adequacy?
Um Nate, Nate, I'm actually going to defer to you, I believe it is. But I think Nate is much more qualified to answer that question.
Yeah, I'd I'd um. A letter, I'd have to just go back and see what was initially uh provided in terms of the traffic. And then what you know what the letter says, so I I didn't, I haven't, you know.
Okay.
But if.
It just feels like if we're relying on an engineer's. Um.
Right, it should be on a letter.
You know, it's it probably should be on letterhead. But I hate, I mean, I hate to have to do that, but. It's changed a lot.
Yeah, no, I mean, it is, it's, I mean, I mean, it's an email that looks like it's on like legal sized paper, like eight and a half by fourteen, it would be nice if we're on letterhead. Something that could fit in a file.
They can, but they can say the same thing, just put it on a different form is what you're saying?
Well, I I I haven't seen what you actually said, is this a le- an email from you, Tom, saying I talked to the engineer?
No, it's it's directly from the engineer, and so what so just to kind of go back. We had a traffic impact statement done for the first iteration of it, right, so they had calculations and here's what the morning peak and afternoon, they. All of that and they determined that that wasn't going to be impactful to the road to the surrounding roadways. And so when I said and I I had sent to them the updated plan. Saying instead of eighty five units, we're seventy seven units, we've eliminated that third curb cut. Um and I could find exactly what his response was, but it was, and like I said, I paraphrased. If it wasn't a problem before, it's certainly not going to be a problem now and he sent that to me in an email, what I did was took that email, printed it, scanned it. Scanned it, submitted it and said, here you go, you know, substance over form for me.
All right, so it's from it's from the engineer and that.
I I guess my question would be if like is the retail space changing a lot, you know, so there are other factors in terms of traffic, so. I mean, the email just doesn't say a lot in terms of qualifying that statement, so I I mean, I kind of want to know like, okay, is it? You know, is there, you know, if you now you have bigger retailer office space, is it a different kind of? Traffic peak times or something, I don't, you know, it just seems a little brief.
Yeah, I mean, so we were uh for the previous iteration, if anything, I think they did a calculation based upon it being a potential Starbucks in that Sutherley building. Because it had that drive through and so they calculated it based on that drive through. The the square footage of commercial space is about the same in in that the previous version to this version. Um and I don't want to say like, no, it's just, I mean, time, money, et cetera, to get them to say what I think they're going to say anyways. Uh and so that's why I'm belaboring it a little bit.
You want me to bring it up? I think that I can bring it up, I put it, I put it in the packet, so if you bear with me.
You can, I know, well, I can, oh, you've got it, great.
Where did the whole thing go?
Obviously, it's your bridge, Pam.
A nice bridge, no.
Sorry.
You do you have a second screen that it might show up on or something?
Let me try to do this, Pam, I've I've got it.
All right, thanks, Tom.
Sure.
There it is.
And so this is Walt Wu from Stan Tech, uh. All other things being equal, between the original revised development proposal, a same type of residential unit, same proposed size type of office space, same proposed size use of retail space. A reduction in residential units from eighty five to seventy seven would expected would be expected to result in fewer site generated trips and therefore less impact on the adjacent roadway network.
All right. Nate, what do you think? Is that sufficient?
Um yeah, I'd want just want to see again what the original, you know, traffic. Report says and then I'd like it on letterhead.
We think, yeah, I can get that on letterhead, that's not a problem.
It's just like I I guess it's a little brief, um you know. But.
Okay. All right, that was my sort of list of questions and. Thank you for answering those, we'll go on to the other members of the board, Jesse.
Thanks Doug, um thanks for the presentation, a couple of related questions, topics that just came up, I think I said this originally. This is a comment, I'm a little, I'm not a traffic engineer, seems a little, I'm a little skeptical that adding a hundred and sixty something spots will have no effect on. Traffic patterns there, but I won't go into that, um I am curious about if there's some kind of plan. To designate spots for commercial use for for non-residents, is that is a parking management plan, anything like that? Um and then a second unrelated question is really having to do with again that front corner that Doug pointed out, seems to be a a large open space there that looks like it's. Um cement or sidewalk material, what's what's imagined there, I'm just curious what that design feature is and what what's imagined to happen in that space.
Jonathan, I don't know if you want to talk about what material you're envisioning or Barry, if you know what material you're envisioning in that uh corner area.
I think we were thinking of it as as kind of a a poor concrete. Um kind of kind of a patio surface. Um and then with a with a brick wall with a with stone cap that kind of edges it.
So so patio like your residents will do something there, will there be tables or benches or anything?
Well, I don't know that that tenant space, the commercial tenant space has been um filled yet for that spot and so that. Um whether it ends up being residential tenant use or or commercial tenant use. Um. You know, Barry may be able to speak speak to that because he probably has a better sense of which which. Commercial spaces are filled.
Yeah, maybe I'll hop in and say, w- we don't have it, so none of these spaces have tenants yet, we've been talking with. Different folks um to occupy these spaces, but we don't have anyone yet. I uh given parking demands of restaurants, cafes, et cetera. This is probably not the right space for them. Um so I don't know that it would be like an outdoor dining area or anything like that. Uh there's a couple of banks that have expressed interest in being in this location, I could imagine that they may want to have some seating. Um out here, uh whether it's temporary or, you know, I don't know that it's permanent, but whether it's temporary. And I think that's when we would look to program that space a little bit more tightly is when we do in fact have a uh end user for this this area.
Yeah, I guess if I refine my question a little, I was wondering why it's more concrete if it's not, there's not, it's not a planned activity there. Why add more impervious surface, but.
Yeah, I mean, I. It's a great question, um we'll take a look at it. My sense is that it 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 does lead to, it's it's almost like a grand entrance to the building and it feels like that's a little bit of a a focal point. Um. I'm just trying to think on the fly if there's something else that, you know, we. Could put there. And Jonathan, maybe we'll put our heads together and see if there's something else we could um put there. Okay, good suggestion. Um. You had a couple of the questions that are escaping me.
Commercial parking versus residential parking?
Great, thank you, yeah, uh so similar to so one University Drive South, which is down at the other end of University Drive. Has a commercial space in it and then residential spaces, what we do is manage between the two, so it's. Um commercial space between eight AM and five PM and then from five PM to eight AM, it's residential space, there will be some. Spaces here that are solely designated to residential and then some that have that commercial and then residential. Um I can't tell you the exact number, that's going to be a little bit dependent on who the commercial tenant is and and what we're finding in the market for residences.
Yep, great, thank you.
All right, uh Bruce.
First of all, I I I like your suggestion, Jesse, in line of questioning, I think that uh it would be nice to have a garden there or some kind of garden that would. Uh perhaps be have many more potential uses and 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 so forth, so. I thought that I was, I thought that was a very good idea. Um question on uh the EV parking a little, I assume that uh. The the charging stations that you are talking about would be. Would be metered to some, uh, common meter, and that, uh, people would? Pay, uh, there, there would be some kind of charge point type, uh, arrangements, they wouldn't be connected to any, uh, particular residential? Units or any of that sort, is that the way, is that the way these, uh, this, uh, uh, regulation is, is sugaring out, sugaring out?
Jonathan, do you know if the EV charging stations can be, I'll call them, commercial?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, basically, we're satisfying the, uh, the, the stretch code type, uh. Um, current, uh, minimum requirement for, uh. EV stations, EV charging stations, I mean.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
More specifically, though, it's the, it's the opt-in code. That we're applying. The extra stretch.
I note that the, I think I noted that the existing sidewalk on University Drive is staying there, and, which seems like a, 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 a lost child? From a past generation. And the main, uh, multi-use thoroughfare that's closer to the building, inside the trees and so forth. Uh, I assume that that's there simply because it's not your business to remove it, it's not your sidewalk. Um, uh, but it does seem that the trees would be better off, and, and everything would be better off if, again, if that was, you know, to further Jesse's aspiration here to? Improve the, uh, the, eliminate unnecessary impervious surface. Uh, but do I understand correctly that that would be a matter for the town to do, we couldn't ask you to do that?
That's, that's correct, that's not our property.
Yeah, so let's, let's note that, uh, it's there, and it's probably, uh, not helping anybody, and, uh, it would be nice if somehow or other in the? Fullness of time it were to be made to go away.
The. Bruce, uh, on that topic, you know, it might be useful to see what the? You know, what the, what the pedestrian path is from the roundabout? To the ten-foot sidewalk versus the public sidewalk, and whether there's any continuity there? Um, Tom, do you, does your? So there's an outer sidewalk that goes around the corner?
Yeah.
And feeds in, and then there's some connections back to the ten-foot. Okay, so, you know, it could stop.
Yeah, sorry, I was gonna just note, there was inconsistency in the plan, so. Um, some don't show this outer sidewalk, you know, right along the road around the roundabout, and other, you know, so is there a way to actually keep it on the inside of the wall? And not have it just, you know, right on the corner around the roundabout?
It's a good question, um, I think if.
Yeah, in this whole, this whole area, this seems really odd right here, if you have all this sidewalk here. And is there a way, I mean, I'm assuming there's, you're, you're expecting a crosswalk here at some point, right?
Right, right.
But.
Yeah, and you know, if you just extended. I- if you extended what you just, like that crosswalk, just straight towards like the corner of the building, and then eliminated that lip on the outside, that probably does? What you're saying, and. Again, we have to be a little bit sensitive of who's going to be the end user here, I, I don't suspect they'll mind that it leads to their front door. Um, or it leads to right in front of their, their business, but I think that's certainly, we can look at that as we're looking at that, um, patio area out there.
And, and I think, Tom, there is some, some kind of continuation of, of what was in the? The rotary design that we had kind of received once upon a time. Um, and I don't, I don't know if that design has, has progressed, um, by, by others, as it were.
Okay.
Uh, a couple more, I guess, um, the, uh. Uh, the, 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 the light fixtures, uh, for, uh, of them were in the, in the packet, but I didn't see, Pam, I didn't see the lighting plan. The photometric plan in the packet, um, so I wasn't able to? Um, ba- basically put the fixtures together with where they were on the site, did I just not see that plan, that it is in the packet, the photometric plan? Did anybody else see the photometric plan in the packet?
I don't believe I received that, just the cut sheets.
Okay.
Tom, did I miss it?
It should be, it's, it's, if you go to the, the Dropbox, it should be four twenty-two Amity Street, SL one, Rev one, Alt. Beautiful name, um.
Yes, my favorite child's name. So, perhaps then I'll hold my question, because one of those lights had a, uh, it was the Sconce light, had a very, very tight photometric, uh. Um, it was the type T of the, uh, of the, uh, ARS, uh, T four. And as far as I could tell by looking at the cup, the, uh, photometric panel was, is basically a, a very sharp defined pool of light, uh. And it seemed to me rather harsh, and so I therefore said, well, where are they using this, because if it's? Uh, so maybe if, if I can get the plan, I can have a look at it, and then depending, presumably they will continue this hearing, and, uh. I'll follow that question up later, once I've looked at the lighting plan. Uh, the photometric plan, I think, and the only other question for now, which is not really a question, it's a comment, but I thought it might be? Appropriate, I, I did take the trouble to look, uh, to some degree at the stormwater management plan and calculations, uh, it's a? Heroic document, and I think I understand, uh, something about what you said for the, you mentioned proprietary system catch basins, which I haven't heard of before, but I did see them in the? The plan, and so, the, the, so only, really only read the, uh, the, 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 the ten pages at the beginning about the general? Uh, and then skimmed the rest of it, but I think I would comment that from my half hour spent looking through that document. It seems that someone is doing a very thorough job of trying to understand stormwater management on this site. And, uh, I know it'll be the Conservation Commission that'll do the heavy lifting here, but we have consistently gotten public comments that we should be concerned. And so I thought I would at least acknowledge that, uh, I've taken the trouble to look at it to some degree, and I, uh, find nothing to, uh. Uh, cause concern and everything to indicate that someone's doing a good job, so, having said that, I'll say that, and that's it.
All right.
And.
Thank you, Bruce, Tom, a, a proprietary stormwater system, is that going to be a maintenance? Headache over the life of the project when the, you know, the, the supplier gets bought out, and they change the models of everything, and?
It, it's really just a fancy way of saying oil-water separator, uh, and the, like, oil grit separator and water grit separator, and it's just how? That, like, the total suspended solids fall out of the water, and so they don't go where the rest of the water goes, and different companies have different ways of doing it. It's not something where, um, there are all these intricate parts to it, I mean, I'm sure if you needed to. We could find somebody to manufacture, uh, whatever's in there, but it's a really simple system, it's just, they've used? And like, whether it's a, like a vortex system versus a different style system, so when we say proprietary, it's more of like? There are storm scepters as, as an instance of what a, a proprietary system is, so, no, we don't think any, there'll be any maintenance issues. Plus, as part of the Conservation Commission approval, there's an O and M plan, which includes, uh, annual preventative maintenance and, and also checking. So, there's belts and suspenders.
Okay. Hey, Jesse.
Thanks, um, quick comment, uh, someone who mostly tries to be on bike and would love to encourage cyclists, I, I count? Room for maybe thirty bikes, assuming this is somewhat accurate, with two hundred and, how many beds? Two hundred and twenty-four beds. I would love to think that more than fourteen percent of students would have a bike, so maybe could think about increasing that to encourage more cycling?
Yeah, no, it's, uh, it's a great suggestion, I guess the only thing that we would say is, or that I would say is? Um, if you're a cyclist, you know how expensive some bikes are? And so often, like, if it was me, I'd be bringing my bike up to my room, probably every time that I would go out, just so that I have it in my room, uh, the rooms are large enough, and there's an elevator in the building, so. You know, if we find that there's like, you know, I go by some, and there's just, you know, picking up our bikes tied up to the, to the bike, well, we'll put in some more, right? I think we can be reactive, and certainly, um, you know, to the greatest extent we can, like a non-transit oriented development, given our proximity to the PVTA? Bus stop here, and across the street proximity to UMass, proximity to Big Y, CVS, et cetera, it feels like it'd be a good project for that. Um, I think we can look to see if we can fit them, just kind of at your suggestion, and then I then rely on the rest of the answer to say? People are probably going to schlep it up anyways.
The, the other thing I could add is that, um, we haven't fully? Since we've changed the shape of the building, we haven't fully reprogrammed the, the common space, um, and part of the prior, uh, design, we had a dedicated, uh? Bike room, um, and so I, while I can't tell you today where we would put that, it is something that we're? Looking to accommodate.
Great. Glad to hear it, Jonathan, that's what I thought Jesse was going to ask, is for covered bike storage, so. Good. Um, any other board comments at this point? All right, I'm going to ask, uh, the public. Any comments from the public on this project? Now's your chance to talk. Pam, could we bring over, whoops, I saw, uh? Could we bring over Ken Rosenthal?
Hi, Ken.
Hello, Ken, need your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, Ken Rosenthal, I live at fifty-three Sunset Avenue in Amherst, and I appreciate the chance? To, uh, comment, and thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for telling us in advance? Who the members of the public are here, you're the only chair that does that, and I'm glad you do. I have a technical comment and a general one, the technical one, Mr. Salmon, you were talking about? A row of charging stations, and then you said, on the other, on, on another row, you were going to? Be wiring, but not putting the charging stations in, I think that makes sense. But I would like to suggest to you, you are not allowing for enough wiring, because this is, I hope? Going to be a building that's going to be with us for decades, and the number of electric vehicles is only going to increase, and? To avoid having to dig up that parking lot and put in more wires, I think I would just? Prepare it now for additional charging stations by putting those wiring in, even though you don't put the stations in. I think that would be wise in the future, unless you want to leave that problem to a future owner, I hope that's not what you want to do. The, the, the more general statement is, what we need in Amherst is housing for people who live and? Work here, not just students who come here temporarily, so I hope, Barry, that at least? Uh, some of these units look really attractive to people, maybe not large families, but people who are? Academics, who people who work at the University of Massachusetts, who want to be able to walk to work, those are the kinds of units we really need? In this town, especially on a place like University Drive, so I hope that you'll, you'll make them as appealing in that way as possible, including? If you can, design some bedrooms that are, are accommodating for, uh, couples that might have one child, I know that's something you're not planning to do now. But I hope you'll change your mind, the other thing I hope you will do aggressively is market these units? To places other than where students are, in other words, get the academic building, uh, 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 offices? To let their new faculty and staff know that there's a place here where they can live. And I know, Barry, that you like to have tenants who stay in a unit longer than a year, because it saves you the trouble and expense of having to? Redo and repaint when the tenants leave, I know you like long-term tenants much better than short-term tenants, so I hope you will not only? Uh, design them to the extent you can now to attract those people, but also market it that way. Uh, I think this is going to be a very good project, but I think we need to consider the needs of the town for people to be able to? Live where they work, and that would be university, mostly university people, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for letting me speak.
Very well, Ken, thank you for participating. Uh, Pam, could we bring over Janet Keller? Hi, Fred, I do see your hand, and we'll get to you when we're done with public comment.
Hi, Janet.
Hello, Janet, you, there you are, you're now unmuted, if you could give us your name and your street address?
Sure, Janet Keller. Um, one twenty Pope Hill Road, and, um, yeah. So, I would just like to echo, um, Ken's comment about, uh? Making this, uh? Uh, development on a very attractive street, um, even more attractive? To tenants that could be, um, expected to, um, a variety of tenants beyond? And above, uh, the students we expect, um, especially important as we're approaching? The expected, uh, drop-off in, uh, student, uh? Students at the colleges, thank you.
All right, thank you, Janet. Uh, one more, let's bring over Pam Rooney.
Wrong one, sorry, Bob.
There we are.
Hi, Pam.
Yeah.
Hello, Pam.
It's Pam Rooney, forty-two Cottage Street, thanks for letting me speak. Uh, I would, I would echo the concern about the facade of the building, because that, as it faces the roundabout, is sort of the, the? The prominent, uh, facade of the building, and, and I think, agree that it needs to be dressed up a bit. Um, my other comments, though, and thank you for, um, presenting this project, I understand? Why you have gone to a taller building, uh, different, different configuration. Um, and the, what I was looking at is the, um? The open space for the use by the occupants of the building, and it seems that the probab- the likely spot would be? On the south side of the building in the V, where it gets a little bit more of the, of the south sun, um, there isn't much there, it looks like, again, I didn't, excuse me. Didn't see these, uh, site plans ahead of time, but it looks like there's not much in the way of amenity in that small, um? Casting place or porting place concrete area. And presumably that is your one and only public, um, occupant open space. It looks, from comparing to the previous version, that there are more parking spaces being provided, I do not remember the count. Um, what I am, what I am trying to understand is with the, um? Parking layout, the parking lot, now extending into the fifty-foot buffer of the wetlands, how are you actually remediating? What I, what I saw by the grading plan was that there was in fact a great deal of? Grading within the actual wetland and within the fifty-foot buffer, um? Where is, what is, what is being considered as remediation, thank you.
All right, um, Tom and team? Are you, do you have anybody to answer that, or is that more something we would be, you would be prepared for at the Conservation Commission?
It's certainly a Conservation Commission issue, but I can happily answer. The nice thing about this site is that it's already developed, right, it's not like we're taking? An existing vacant parcel and looking to put something on there, so there's already, I think? Um, uh, there's already about thirty thousand square feet of existing alteration in the buffer zone. And what we would be doing is increasing that alteration by about three thousand square feet. And so, we're, we're pulling it out of, you know, what I can do is show you? This one. You should be seeing, um, the blue represents existing conditions.
Yep.
And the black line represents proposed conditions, and so you'll see, you know, here, we're closer to the wetlands at the blue, here, you've got a building closer to the wetlands. And so we're pulling those areas back, uh, we may be? Touching a little bit more in, in the buffer in other areas, but on balance, you know, we've got? A pretty robust mitigation in the form of, uh, wetland restoration, detention basin upgrades. uh, wetland restoration, detention basin upgrades, uh, wetland plantings, pollinator plantings, uh, increasing. Right now, I think it's maybe a thirty-six inch corrugated pipe that goes under the, the existing curb cut. We're increasing that size and making it a box culvert. So we're doing all of these different environmental approvals. And part of what the Conservation Commission does, as, as you know, is they look at what your impacts are, what your mitigation is to make sure that you are offsetting anything that you are doing appropriately. And so that's why, you know, we haven't gone through that process completely, but they were, Conservation Commission was ready to issue an order of conditions based on the previous plan and this one's even less impactful to the environment and we have more mitigation. So we expect to have a, a good result. So this is, just to put it into context for you.
Tom, um, since, since Pam had asked, what, what, what is the mitigation? What are the kinds of things that this plan does that are considered mitigation? Like pulling back from the, you know, some of the extensions into the, to the buffer area or the wetlands have been pulled back. You've got your special proprietary stormwater system. Um, are, are there other things that, that you could mention just sort of as a bullet list of mitigation efforts?
Sure. And so this is probably what I would say, the mitigation plan. And so, um, we've got here on the left side, square footages of the different plantings associated with, uh, the different mitigation areas. So you've got your basin bottom planting right here. So this is, it's something that has deteriorated over time. So you, you pull it up, you churn it and then you replant it and then it functions better ecologically. Then you've got all of your surrounding area here in the buffer where you don't have native species. You've got overgrowth. Um, and same in the back here. And so what all this is going to do is it's going to be better habitat for animals. It's going to be better water treatment for not only rainwater, but also any stormwater once it's clean. So we have to meet the Massachusetts stormwater standards that include, um, total suspended solids, because you, in a project like this, you can't put suspended solids into the resource areas. So we, that's where that proprietary system comes out to clean the water before it does then discharge into the wetlands. So those are a couple. The, the number of plantings, both the trees, shrubs, perennials, and then the wetland planting mix, and then over on the northerly side of the site. So right now, right where this cursor is, is a catch basin. If you follow this drain line, you would, you could go all the way up Amity Street to the center of town. Um, right at the intersection, uh, outside of Subway. Everything to, uh, on the, the westerly side blows down that hill and ultimately, and all the side streets collect into that drain line, blows here and currently, uh, discharges into an area that has not been maintained. There's catanine tails, it's full of sludge. That's all going to get cleaned out. We're going to put in native rounded stones at the bottom to allow for better filtration of the water. And, um, then like I said, we are upsizing that, uh, box culvert to allow better flow so that there aren't any stormwater consequences upstream if there's additional rainfall. And then we're putting new wetland plants in this area. Like I said, we've got, um, pollinator habitat here. And then we've got, um, just upland meadow in all of, of those areas. So just like a couple of high levels, when you talk about mitigation, it's not only pulling some areas, uh, you know, pulling buildings back, um, not encroaching as far, uh, we're doing that. And then we're restoring, all of this stuff will remain untouched, right? There's some maintenance that'll have to happen. You touch it during construction, you plant it, and it's like a set it and forget it. There's, like I said, some upkeep and maintenance, but you're not getting in there on a, on a day-to-day basis to disturb it.
Okay. All right, great. Um, I don't see any more hands from the public. Fred?
Uh, yeah, two things. Uh, one is, um, and this may be a little controversial, but, um, I'm not convinced that, uh, apartments necessarily have to have different sized bedrooms in order to be construed as designed for families. Uh, just from my own personal experience, uh, I, the three family that I live in, I bought fifty-three years ago and I didn't live in it the year that I bought it. Uh, my wife and I moved into it the next year after that. So I've been living here for fifty-two years. At that point, we did not have children. We subsequently had four children. And, uh, the, uh, all the bedrooms are the, are, are roughly the same size. They, it's a eighteen sixty-eight, uh, Victorian. But, uh, so there, there's some differences in bedroom sizes, but it's, it, it never even occurred to me that, uh, uh, that there needed to be different sized bedrooms and we raised four children in roughly the same sized bedroom. So I don't think that's necessarily, uh, anything that, uh, precludes families from moving in. Uh, and the, you know, a, a affordable is going to be the, the more decisive thing there. Uh, the other, uh, question, I, I think, Tom, you may have, uh, gotten into this in a prior, but I want to just double check now. And that is, uh, whether there's been conversations about how to transition, uh, the businesses in the, uh, particularly the insurance agency that that building's coming down. Uh, the, the first iteration of this, there was a very clear plan. They're going to build the two, two buildings at different times and that made it simple. And I'm just wondering whether, uh, there's going to be a problem with that.
Great. Uh, thanks for the question, Fred. So, yeah, so we, we have had and are having, um, conversations with the tenants of twenty-five thirty-five University Drive, um, trying to get in charter insurance, uh, negotiating a lease right now to have them actually occupy a part of this new building. They're, they would be one of the tenants. They've expressed interest and we're having those conversations. Um, I think the other tenant is an attorney's office and we've been talking with them about when we would have to take that building down. And so the way that we are thinking about it is, um, this is a rather large building and so I think what Barry would be able to do is to, uh, build a portion of it. And then as of, let's say, May of twenty twenty-six, he'd get to a certain point, he'd then have to take twenty-five thirty-five down, which should work for everybody's timing. And then he'd finish the rest of this building and then do the, the site work associated with it. Um, there may be a way to even take down a portion of that twenty-five thirty-five to finish this whole building. Um, so we are, just to answer the question directly, we're in constant communication with in charter and the attorney's office. Um, Cheryl Nina had left to go somewhere else. Uh, Barry occupies, you know, his office occupies some of the space. Uh, and I think that's all that occupies that, uh, twenty-five thirty-five University Drive. So we are having those conversations to make sure that they're not inappropriately displaced.
Uh, could I chime in a little bit on the, um, the kind of bedroom size, size piece? Um, if we could bring back up the, the first floor plan. While a lot of the bedrooms are the same, there, there is actually some variance in some units. Um, and in fact, you could see one of them right there on the first floor. There's a, um, a two-bedroom units. Um, right near your cursor there, uh, there's a couple of them that, that, for example, have a larger bedroom with an en suite, um, bathroom. So they, the, the layouts are not uniform. There is variety. This true, the, the, the larger four-bedroom units, uh, tend to have very similar sized bedrooms. Um, but we, we are trying to make a diversity of, um, unit types to attract a, a diversity of, of folks to the building.
Great. Thank you, Jonathan. All right, Nate.
Sure. Yeah, thanks Doug. I just wanted to ask about, you know, the outdoor space again, uh, and then access to the roof decks and if it's really just the two ends of the building or if there are any other uh, upper story outdoor space. Um, and then, you know, say for the outdoor deck space, you know, is there, it's like on the south part, it's, uh, open to, uh, anyone, but then it also abuts a unit. So I don't know about privacy concerns or separating that. And then I think the, um, courtyard space in the back is nice, but it would, uh, uh, actually get pretty hot. So I don't know if there's ideas about shade structures or actually making it usable. Uh, you know, whether there's a portico or some other elements there and seating. I think that would actually, could be a nice space right now, but it, it looks, you know, pretty bare. Um, and so there could be some improvements there in terms of making it more usable.
Always fun. I'll say, uh, good suggestion in that, that backspace. Let us think about that a little bit. Um, I don't know that the portico, I, I know exactly, I, I kind of see it in my mind's eye what you're talking about. So let us explore that a little bit more. And then as far as that, uh, we'll call it rooftop space. You know, I think if there's going to be areas designated for a unit and then either two units are splitting it or it's unit and then open to, to other folks, we'd put a fence in between that open and that which is, uh, just designated for a unit so that there's no privacy concerns there.
Sure, thanks. Just, oh, the upper unit on the corner doesn't have access to that roof deck on the corner, do they? Is, is it really only the two ends of the building? The treatment in the, you know, the graphically, it looks the same. So on the, on the floor plan, so it's just hard to say.
You're saying this on this end, Nate?
And then in the corner facing the roundabout, like is that actually?
Oh, up here? Yes, it should be Jonathan, right?
All right, I'm babbling away muted. Um, the one in the corner, that's, that's a dedicated, uh, deck space for that, that unit. Um, and then down at the other end, I, we have to come up with some notion about how we want to divide these and we really haven't had a chance to program them with, with Tom and Barry. Um, you know, so there may have to be a fence divider there, or maybe that one is just the, you know, the one on the south side is just the public amenity for the residents. Um, and then the one on the west is split between the two units. There is an opportunity to do some small decks, um, off some of those other ones, you know, in those other little areas. Um, but we, we, we need to kind of balance that with the, honestly, with the amount of glazing that, that we're going to be allowed, uh, uh, as part of the passive house process. I've had to kind of prune back some of the glazing. Um, and so not all of those will necessarily be decks or, or maybe they will, but they'll be, you know, maybe fewer access points to them.
Sure, yeah, thanks. I do think the southern one off the community room, you know, that my only, you know, question would be then how does that other unit have privacy if it's, you know, if it is all open to the?
I think we'd have to put a fence there. I don't see any other way because otherwise, I mean, unless there's no windows on this wall and even still, people could be outside. I think the best way to do it is probably just to put a fence between the, the two right there.
Yep.
Could be an L-shaped fence.
Okay, um, is there any provision for solar at all? Solar panels? Is there anywhere to put them? I don't?
Yes, yeah, we, so we have to reserve forty percent of the roof area, um, to be solar ready in the future. Um, and that'll mostly be at the, at the most, at, at, at the, the roof above the fifth floor.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, um, Nate. Uh, do, do we need to continue this meeting in order to get a little more information from the CONCOM process? Or could we vote and then accept this tonight?
No, I'd recommend continuing it. The Conservation Commission will probably pick it up in February. It is going back to the ZBA near the end of February for the variance. And so right now, there really is no variance for this project. And so although it's a modification of what was previously approved, the variance is tied to the building plan or, you know, the site plan that was a part of it. And so that's changed. And so, you know, staff hasn't had time to, you know, look at this and write a development application report, although it is similar to what was proposed. We'd want to wait to hear from fire and public works. And so, you know, I would continue it to, um, you're probably the second meeting in February. And then, you know, at, at that time, it may not have gone to the ZBA, but I think CONCOM maybe at least. And either way, staff will have a better sense of where it's going, um.
All right. Tom, any objection to continuing to February?
I think it's probably the hand we're being dealt. All I can ask is that if, if we were continued to February and it's the second meeting, um, I don't know if the first meeting's better. Even, I know, we know we have these loose ends, um, even if your approval was contingent upon receiving those other approvals, just because I'm, I, I start to get worried about a time crunch. If we were to come in February and you'd say, sure, we can approve it that night, assuming we take care, you know, assuming ZBA either is fine with it or we condition on it and CONCOM is fine with what we're doing, which again, I suspect they will be. And we've dealt with the treatment of the corner, roundabout, the materials and all of that stuff that the board would be comfortable to approve it that night, then I'd say fine, second February meeting. I just, I don't want to tell you what to do, but we're starting to get crunched for time, as you can probably feel.
Well, um, you know, it seems like there were a few documents that we did not receive as part of the package that maybe you uploaded and just didn't get distributed. Um, you know, the, the landscape, may, I, I'm not sure. I received the landscape plan. I don't see it. Um, Bruce, is that, that you did see it? Okay, so maybe I just didn't receive it. Um, maybe it's just the lighting plan, uh. Yeah, but, uh, you know, I, I would cert- it doesn't seem like we've gotten very much comment tonight, you know, in terms of objection to what you're doing. You know, we've kind of picked around the edges at this and that. It's mostly to educate ourselves. So I think we probably could approve this at the next time we see it. Um, I'm not going to promise that, but I, I think, you know, that's kind of how I see where we're at. So, um, I think that would be, I, I'd like to accept Nate's recommendation and, um, Pam, what's the, what's the date of our second meeting in March or in, in February?
That's February nineteenth.
February nineteenth, okay.
And we can do six thirty-five.
All right. All right, um, so board members, um, unless anybody wants to make any additional comments, I think, uh, we would, uh, Bruce, are you, are you hoping to make the motion?
Yep.
All right, motion. Go, I think you need to go ahead and do that then.
Uh, move the continuation of the hearing to, uh, February nineteenth at six thirty-five.
PM, thank you.
Yeah.
Back on that. All right. All right, uh, any additional conversation from the board? All right, we'll go through it, starting with you, Bruce.
I approve.
And Fred? Fred?
I unmute myself. I.
Thank you. Lawrence?
I.
Thank you. Jesse?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Five in favor to, whoops, no, Johannes here for this one.
Thanks, I'm an I.
All right. Six in favor, one absent, uh, the motion kept passes. We will see you for this project on February nineteenth.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Tom and Barry.
Thank you. See you then.
All right. Good night. All right, the time is eight oh three on the clock that I'm looking at. Why don't we take a five-minute break and we'll come back and continue with our next hearing?
Hey Pam, as promised, I, I think I'm hitting my wall here.
Okay. I'm gonna, I will say you left at eight oh three. Aw. Sorry.
No, I'm, I'm so sorry. I, I, um, this has been a rough one. So, uh, I was trying to stick around as long as I could, but at least wanted to make it, make it through the first presentation, so.
All right, Lawrence. I'll let everybody know. All right. Good luck. Feel better.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye. Bye.
All right, it looks like we are reassembling.
Mr. Marshall, Mr. Clutz um actually left the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. At eight oh three.
Okay. All right. Looks like we still need Nate. Well, Pam. You know, Nate doesn't need to hear the intro that I have to read. Maybe we should just go ahead.
There he is.
Sorry, I was trying to eat a quick dinner. I was gonna um maybe recommend having the adjust the order. I know there may be people here for the construction logistics plan for Fort River. I don't know.
Okay.
There is definitely two.
Okay. Um. Nate, would you be presenting that?
No, uh, Bob Parent and I think Jared Smith are here for that.
Okay. Well, that's fine with me. So why don't we go ahead and bring Bob over and I'll? Read that. All right, Pam, all right with you if I go ahead and start reading? Okay.
Yes.
All right, time is eight eleven and we're going to resume our meeting now. We're gonna change the order of. Uh, the agenda a little bit. We're gonna go to the old business item number one. SPR twenty twenty-four dash zero four and SPP twenty twenty-four dash zero three. Town of Amherst at seventy southeast street. Review and make recommendations on construction logistics plans submitted in accordance with condition number twenty-eight. Of the site plan review decision for the Fort River School. Site plan review was approved under section three point three zero of the. Three point three three zero of the zoning bylaw to construct a three-story. One hundred five thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot elementary school building with associated site improvements, including parking. And athletic fields. Uh, map fifteen A parcel forty-seven in the V in the RVC and FPC zoning districts. Welcome, Bob. Thanks for coming back.
Good evening. Um, actually, I'm not planning to make much of the presentation. We have Jared Smith.
Okay.
From our contractor, CTA Construction, who we, construction managers, um, who's put the logistics plan together. Uh, we also have a project architect on hand if necessary, if there's any questions that might come up. So. Uh, Pam, I believe you.
Yeah, Jared was brought over.
I brought over Jared. I don't I don't see um. Mister Cooper or Mister Rice here.
That's fine. They, we were thinking we might not be on till eight thirty, so they may be joining us a little bit late. But I, they're really here just in case. So I think Jared is the key guy. So I'd suggest we start with him.
All right. Uh, Jared, we 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 don't see an image. Uh, can you let us know that you're there?
I I am here. Yeah, my uh, my camera is not uh cooperating. Uh, but I can certainly share my screen if you would like me to bring up the plan or.
Well, yeah, if you if you want to bring it up uh to walk us through, that'd be great.
All right, you do you see my my screen?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So we we plan to utilize the uh the existing. I guess call it the pre-enabling construction entrance. As our our primary means of um. Entering and exiting the uh construction site. Um. As you pull in the site, we'll have a, you know, there's the existing construction fence that's there, which we um. Intend intend to maintain for um. You know, the duration of the uh the project. Um. As you pull in, you'll see, you know, this is the approximate location of our um. Construction field offices. We'll have two two offices, one for CTA and one for the um. Uh, the owner's uh site rep and um, you know, we'll have some designated parking right in front there for. Um, kind of, you know, the architect, engineers, uh, people that that aren't there on kind of a. A daily uh basis, but you know, we'll be there for uh various meetings and so forth. Um, you know, we'll have some some ground storage trailer for some of the CTAs. Uh, miscellaneous, uh, you know, tools and 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 so forth. Um, up in the, I guess, call it the northwest corner of the uh the site. This is where we planted, um, utilize this area for um a majority of our um. Subcontractor parking for the project. You know, there may be some points in time where we may have to have people, people park in in some other areas. On site temporarily, uh, depending on what's going on, but you know, that'll kind of have to. Uh, change, you know, as 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 the job progresses, um. Upper up in the uh, on the right-hand side of the page, which is the east side. Is kind of where we're anticipating the mason kind of staging a lot of his um. You know, his brick and so forth. It's kind of kind of out of the way. He'll have a decent amount of material, but um. There'll be, you know, deliveries that that come for him through various parts of the uh the project. Um, on the north corner of the site, we have uh, you know, we intend to use this for some contractor storage boxes just to secure materials. Um, and a couple of them may just set up some some field offices, but they're, you know, storage boxes that that also serve as a. As a field office. Um. Up in the uh the north corner or the, I guess, call it the north center of the site, uh, plan to utilize this for our concrete washout area. The trucks would pull up, wash wash out here, uh, and then um. Go back out of out of the site. Want to keep that kind of up up and out of the way of any um. Uh, site perimeter area. Uh, we'll most likely have some uh additional temp toilets set up in this uh general vicinity. Um. Uh, just, you know, they don't have to end up getting moved as as much. Um. We have multiple areas throughout the building where we're gonna probably have some some dumpsters. Uh, and we'll keep some areas accessible so um debris can be taken out of the building. Uh, relatively easily. And and again, you know, some of these might might end up moving to some different locations around the building depending on um. Some of the other site activities around uh the building itself. Um. Let's see here. Um, so we also um. I think here, we intend to kind of put our our temporary electrical service panel once we get temp electric. Uh, into the site over over near our trailers and then we'll we'll run that into the uh, into the building. Um. Uh, we we may end up utilizing some of this area along the existing. Driveway as uh some overflow parking for contractors. Uh, but that's gonna kind of only be on a um, an as-needed basis. Uh, depending on, you know, if we're wrecking steel in this corner of the site, we may have to keep people away from. You know, that, you know, this area temporarily until the steel goes up and then we can kind of resume some of this, you know, parking some of this area here. Let's see, what else do we have? Currently, there's an existing gate that's that's between the um. The existing school driveway and um the northwest corner. Of our current work area that we intend to to keep locked and shut at all times. However. Um, we are going to keep the gate there in the event that we didn't need to use it for um. You know, emergency uh access, uh, but that's, you know. Should shouldn't really need to be utilized at any point in time, hopefully. Um. Our construction timeline, um. We're looking to mobilize for phase one C. Uh. Hopefully next week with the soft mobilization, we've been going through some of the permitting with the various uh town departments, including conservation. Um, we're starting to uh, we're gonna be doing some site layout um and establishing um. Controls out there uh tomorrow. Uh, we have our our wetlands consultant going out to do an inspection of the existing. Erosion controls uh as requested by um. Conservation Department, they'll report back to them and we're looking at scheduling. Our um conservation pre-construction uh site meeting on uh Monday with um. Conservation Department and um our site contractor. And a couple other subcontractors. Uh, in terms of uh, you know, traffic, uh, you know, again, this is going to be our primary. Uh, entrance into the site. We're gonna have, you know, a sign, you know, it's a it's a construction entrance. No unauthorized vehicles are allowed to enter here. So that'll be, you know, prominent, so so people see that. Um, and then up at the school's existing current. Um. Driveway, we're gonna put some additional signage just indicating that it is uh not a construction entrance. Um, just to prevent anybody from, you know, coming down down this way, anticipating being able to get into the site. They they shouldn't, but um. You know, we're gonna put these signs up and, you know, we distribute the logistics plan to all the subcontractors. Um, it's part of our, you know, uh, welcome package when when we send out contracts, so. The message will be uh conveyed to all of subcontractors. That, uh, you know, there's a specific way that you have to enter the site and. You know, it's an existing school and so forth, so. Um. In terms of um, you know, some additional uh logistics clarifications, uh, we talked about the the parking. Um, you know, we're gonna be able to accommodate probably at least forty forty vehicles in the northwest corner of the site. Um. It's 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 believed that a number of our our larger subcontractors, such as the, you know, the mason and the and the and the framers and drywall contractors. Um, most of them will will travel, you know, with, you know, a van. You know, of two or three vans with ten guys in them each, and so that'll help reduce the uh the need for onsite parking. Um, which, you know, we encourage whenever uh whenever possible. Um. Uh, deliveries to the site will be scheduled to be outside of the school pickup and drop-off hours to the greatest extent possible. Um, there may be some times if we have a large concrete pour where, you know. Concrete needs to come in every, you know, trucks will be coming in every twenty minutes, every half hour. Uh, but again, we're we're gonna coordinate that closely with the um, with the school and the owner's onsite rep. And um, but again, that should be fairly limited and. Chance are by the time we get to some of those larger. Pores will probably be closer to when school is um. Is out for the year, uh, but but again, you know, we're just cognizant that it is a uh. An active school and um it it's something as a company that we we deal with all the time being uh. A company that builds primarily uh schools. Um, subcontractors will schedule their deliveries with CTA in advance. And the logistics plan and delivery will be provided subcontractors to assist in the coordination and scheduling of the deliveries. Uh, trucks will not need to wait on the road prior to pulling in the site, so. The intent is to have. You know, deliveries come in. They're not gonna wait and idle on the road. They're gonna pull in. You know, in through here. You know, wait and and be directed as to where where onsite they need to go to make their um, their drop-off, depending on who they're uh delivering for. But the intent is to not have anybody sitting on um. On on the road out here. Uh. Uh. All all materials are anticipated to be stored on site, so you know, we're not anticipating having to store anything outside of our limit of work. So, you know, stuff will be delivered as needed or as close to as needed. You know, again, we'll be able to utilize some of these these storage boxes and and once, you know, the building starts going up. Um, you know, a lot of material will just go right into the site and be stored inside the building until it's. Uh, time to be installed. Um. And uh, CTA and our 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 field staff will coordinate with the clerk. For the works, uh, the owner's project rep and the uh school regarding uh noisy activities. Um. You know, again, you know, once we get, you know, when we get into the drilling, you know, probably anticipating that being um. You know, closer to the tail end of the um of the school year, but even that activity isn't. Um, isn't extremely loud. It's not, it's not as bad as one might. um, isn't extremely loud, it's not, it's not as bad as one might um imagine, but you know, we'll, we'll make sure we're letting them know of, you know, what's up and coming and uh we've already been having conversations with them about, you know, you know, we're doing X, you know, and they'll say, okay, we, we have testing on, on these dates and I'll try to work with the, with the school as best as possible to, to minimize any um any impact. Dust will be managed and mitigated um as outlined in the project specifications, but, you know, in the, in the summer months, you know, the, the site contractor will have water trucks. Um, you know, just driving around hosing down um, any areas um. And then uh, they'll also have a uh street sweeper um onsite, you know, in the event that, you know, anything will, you know, get tracked onto this part of the driveway prior, you know, but the intent is to maintain this, maintain the existing tracking pad uh and make sure that we're not tracking anything into the uh, into the roadway. Quest, questions and?
Thank you. Board members, any questions about Mr. Smith's plans? I don't see any hands.
Seems very thorough to me.
Thank you, Bruce. Uh, Bob, any, any comments you wanna make or you have nothing to add?
No, I think Jar- Jared's done a very good job in a short amount of time putting it all together, so yeah.
Okay.
He covered it well.
Yeah.
All right.
In, in this, this uh, you know, the, the plan somewhat can be somewhat fluid and we'll make adjustments as we go, but you know, we're, you know, we meet weekly with the um, the project team in the town, you know, okay, this, what's upcoming. Here's our three-week look, look ahead schedule and, you know, we'll make sure that we're keeping everybody um informed and we're make, gonna make sure that, you know, we're coordinating and communicating through the OPM with the school in terms of um you know, what, what they might need from us.
I guess I'll ask you one question, which is why is the wash-off area so far from the exit? Seems like if, if you wash off, you might pick up some dirt on your way out after you wash.
It's not for washing out off the, the wheels of the truck, it's for washing out the, the concrete, so after the concrete trucks
Oh.
Um, place the concrete, um, they have to wash out their truck and typically, you know, they end up having a you know, a lot, you know, a decent amount of um water and concrete slurry that, you know, we have them wash out in, into a line dumpster uh so that it doesn't, you know, get, gets spilled onto the ground. Um, so they'll wash out there and then, and then turn around and pull off site. Um, we wanted to kind of keep it away from you know, oth- other areas where there's gonna be a lot of um, you know, you know, vehicles coming in, in and out constantly. You know, if we put it in here, it's just gonna block access into the site. We don't wanna put it down here because you're, you know, you're closer to the wetlands and to the river and so forth, so this was kind of the most in our mind, the most logical place to put this.
So is there a trash, a truck wash-off area or, or?
There is a.
You're relying on the mat?
There's a, there's a, a tracking pad that is, that is here. Currently, you know, in the winter, we can't, we can't do a, a wash-off area for, for wheels, but um, just could, you know, too cold, um, plus the ground's pretty well frozen through here, but um, you know, if, if needed, we can you know, hook up uh to, to um one of the hydrants and uh, you know, we have a, we have a meter that we got from the town. And um, you know, we'll, we'll have to manage uh cleaning wheels and and so forth to make sure, you know, we're not, not tracking anything offsite.
Okay, yeah, uh that would probably be my main concern. Okay, uh, I saw a hand briefly and then it went down, so I guess I should assume there aren't any other questions right now. I guess Jared, thank you for coming, Bob, thanks for coming. Uh, Nate, do we need to formally accept this or, or have we satisfied the condition of the of the approval earlier?
Yeah, the condition doesn't necessarily say that it needs approval, I think this was just for review by the planning board and then if there are any recommendations or suggestions, they would be forwarded to the building commissioner, so you know, right now, the inspection services is at a point where they could issue a building permit to get work started and they're trying to keep the, you know, the end deadline, the, the, you know, the end of the contract period the same, even though the starting point has been pushed back, and so, you know, if there was any questions or recommendations, it can always be sent to the building commissioner through staff. Uh, if there's not any now, then this can move forward and like Jared said, you know, the building commissioner and staff and the town will work closely with the contractor, so if, for instance, Doug, in the spring, it seems like, you know, the tracking pad isn't as effective, you know, we can, they can, you know, then talk about having, you know, some wash out there for tires or something, so I, I think it you know, there's a, you know, there's a long construction period over the seasons and you know, the building commissioner is pretty comfortable, if this, you know, this is the starting point and if it needs to be adjusted, it can be adjusted and respond to any, any issues that may come up.
Okay, all right, sounds good, then, thank you very much.
Yeah, and we, we, we appreciate the uh, the opportunity uh for the, for the project and uh we're looking forward to uh work, working together with the, the town.
All right.
We're excited, so tha- thank you very much for everybody's time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, time is eight thirty-one and we'll go back to our regular published order of our agenda for tonight. Let's see, the next item was the second of our public hearings. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty A, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted. And has been held, is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding University Drive Overlay District. Continued from October thirtieth, November twentieth, December fourth and December eighteenth, all of last year. To consider amending the zoning bylaw by adopting the University Drive Overlay District as Article Seventeen and amending the official zoning map by adding the University Drive Overlay District. The overlay district would include properties on the east and west sides of University Drive between Northampton Road and Amity Street and establishes its own requirements for mixed-use buildings, including dimensional standards, standards and conditions and design guidelines. Is there, are there any board disclosures for this evening's conversation? I do not see anybody raising their hand. Um, Nate, uh, do you wanna make the uh initial presentation or walk us through this?
Yeah, sure, thanks everyone, uh Nate Malloy, just in case there's other members of the public. The Community Resources Committee met um last, I, I think it was just last week, and reviewed this, and so um there are some changes made, and so there's an updated document that was sent with the date of January fourteenth. There are some additional comments provided, uh, you know, um, they were from individual members, it wasn't necessarily a consensus of the CRC, but just so we could talk about those. Uh, you know, my hope is that actually the planning board, if we have time tonight, could get to a recommendation point or at the next meeting. Um, you know, I think some of the changes that are, I'll go through tonight are, are just to see you know, are in response to some of the CRC comments and other comments, and I'm not necess- you know, not sure, we're not necessarily recommending them, you know, um, there's different ways to phrase things and I think those could be looked at. Uh, and I guess I'll start with uh showing my screen and going through the document. If that's visible for everyone, I'll make it a little bigger.
Yep.
The uh so one thing we hadn't done and we asked our uh town attorney about this and they didn't think they think it wa- is within the scope of this article is, in Article Two, we define zoning districts. And so we had in, before included um, a discussion about what, what it would say in Article Two, and so what we're recommending is, you know, adding what's in bold here, University Drive Overlay District. Um, you know, the University Drive Overlay District is an overlay district intended to encourage economic development and expand housing opportunity, including housing for undergraduate students by allowing mixed-use buildings in an area that is currently zoned, limited business, and office park along the east and west sides of University Drive between Northampton Road and Amity Street. And so it's a, a descriptor of the district. Uh, and so it's actually a little bit more, uh, it has a little bit more description than some of the other statements, sometimes it's only one line or two lines in Article Two, but we think this is a a good way to describe it. Um, in terms of changes, you know, we ha- we, we are calling this University Drive Overlay District, there's some discussion about would we say it's a mixed-use over, University Drive Overlay District. Um, so my recommendation is not to have mixed use in the title. It's just, it's an overlay district, you know, in the, for instance, in the future, we might want it to allow something else. We typically don't get that specific in terms of the definition of a, of an overlay district, so mixed use is one use category in the bylaw, but that was something that was discussed at CRC and I'm, I'm not sure it's confusing that if it doesn't say it, we define it more in the next section, but that's a change. Uh, you know, our bylaw has different titles for subsections, so we had this considered a general or it could be called applicability, I think there's different um, you know, like I said, a, a different structure in our bylaw. But what has been added is, you know, in track changes, to clarify, the overlay district shall apply only to mixed-use buildings. Um, that way it's just pretty clear. And then uh therefore the standards and conditions in Section three point three two five of the zoning bylaw do not apply in the overlay district, and any mixed-use building proposed in the overlay district shall be permitted using the mixed-use overlay district. And so that clarifies that if a property is in the overlay district, someone couldn't opt to use the base zoning or opt to use the overlay, they would use the overlay. We don't, we're not sure anyone would actually wanna use the, the base zoning in the limited business, you have the additional lot area for family and other standards and conditions that would really limit the size of a mixed-use building and, and possibly its placement. Uh, so those are the changes at the, you know, right now, again, you know, take questions or comments as they come, Doug.
Yeah, I mean, Bruce has got his hand up. Um, and, and you've had a couple of instances where you, you know, you, you're showing a revision, but it doesn't sound like you're really convinced you wanna do that, do you want us to comment as you go through, as you, as you talk about each one or come back and go through it?
It can go through, I think what I just read in this paragraph here is, you know, is helpful. You know, in terms of the definite, the, you know, the title changes, to me, it's um, I'm not sure that they are.
I don't see the need for them if, you know, if somebody else doesn't. We don't really need mixed use in the Article Seventeen title and we don't really need I mean, I think general is just as good as applicability or even better. Bruce, you've got a comment.
I agree with both of those, I was only raising my hand to say that if you did put Article Seventeen mixed use as the title, you would should do it also in the uh Section Two or Article Two above and, and the, and it looked like if we were to carry with mixed use, that there might be a, there's an opportunity for an inconsistency there. So if, while you've got mixed use uh here, you should also have it um above or have it like you have now, I would go for the way you have it now. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Bruce, what about you, Jesse?
Uh, I agree with those points, uh mostly I was gonna just clarify, Nate, you've made changes based on the CRC conversation or, or we're then gonna look at the comments that were sent and discuss those as well?
Both, so I think during the CRC hearing, you know, say the changes that were made in this paragraph um are a result of some of that conversation, just to help clarify, you know, what, you know, what, how the mystery mixed-use district applies to the mixed-use buildings, right, how the overlay district applies only to mixed-use buildings, and so um, the comments that were received after, we can go through after. You know, if we wanna pull them in now, I was gonna just walk through the changes, and so, the last time the planning board talked about this uh, staff had already, had talked about how we would change the bylaw, but you actually didn't see those revisions, so we just, we, we talked through them. And so, um, you know, I, I can try to discern which ones were from a result of the most recent CRC meeting and which ones were ones we talked about previously, and so uh, but I think the changes here are, you know, I agree, I, I think this is, you know, not necessary, I think the ones in this paragraph are actually great clarifications uh and help, you know, so if someone comes in the future, they're not saying, well, I wanna do a mixed-use building using the BL zoning, we'll say, actually you can't. Um, and then, you know, if someone wants to put an apartment building in the overlay, we'll say, well, you have to use the base zoning because the overlay only applies to mixed-use buildings, and so I think, you know, that clarification helps. Um, for a purpose, we just say it is in close proximity to the University of Massachusetts, I think as opposed to adjacent, a clarification that this area, you know, isn't so adjacent, um we changed this provision right here about waiving or modifying dimensional standards, and we just say as um provided below, and so essentially, we, we have this statement for two reasons, one typically in our dimensional table, we have footnotes or ways or in our bylaw to modify standards. Uh, in the overlay, we really don't, except for in one instance with lot and building coverage. And so, um, so this will guide you, you know, this, this allows, you know, if we, we, if you wanna waive it, it's however it is described specifically in the overlay in these next sections. And it really applies to right here, to this lot coverage. Um, because someone could develop a property using the overlay and not using the overlay, so there could be an existing building, apartment building or a office building, and then they have enough of a property size that they wanna put a mixed-use building. Uh, there, you know, what we're saying here is that the maximum lot and building coverages shall be determined by the permit granting authority anytime a mixed-use building is located on the same lot with another building with a different principal use. Uh, however, in no case shall the total building or lot coverage exceed the amount listed here, so if, for instance, it's a pretty big property, they have an office building in one corner, they wanna put a mixed-use, small mixed-use building in the other corner of the property and they propose to have all this paving between the buildings, it can't exceed eighty-five percent. At the same time, the planning board or the permit granting authority could say, well, we don't think you need to be at eighty-five percent, that's a lot of surface parking, we want you at eighty percent. Uh, and so this is really the only, you know, somewhat discretionary piece here is when there's kind of multiple principal uses on a property. However, there is still a limit, sixty and eighty-five. Uh, there was discussions about what is, you know, is that, you know, what you know, why the maximum building and lot coverage, I will say that in the BL, the lot coverage is eighty-five percent, so we're still at eighty-five percent. The office park is seventy percent. Where the overlay is, you know, um, allows for more development is we have sixty percent building coverage, whereas the other zoning districts don't, and so essentially, like in, in the office park, we say you can only have twenty percent building coverage, but twenty percent or seventy, and, and twenty percent building coverage and seventy percent lot coverage. So what that tells me is we're saying have a building and then put a lot of surface parking. But in the overlay, we're saying you can have a bi- big building, up to a big building and then limited parking, or you still could have a small building, sixty is the max and still have a fair amount of parking, but, you know, we're allowing that flexibility in the overlay, so you know, we think that this provision will allow someone to, like I said, develop it using the overlay and not using the overlay, if they wanna have you know, an R and D building and a mixed-use building.
Okay.
We made the setbacks consistent on Northampton Road, it was twenty-five, we reduced it to twenty, given where the property line, the right-of-way are on the properties, it's also consistent with Amity Street. Uh, this is a new one we had discussed, but it hadn't been provided. When the side or rear yard abuts a residential use in a residential district, there shall be a minimum thirty-foot buffer measured from the property line that is vegetated. It has a pervious surface and shall not be used for dumpsters, mechanical equipment, driveways, parking, delivery access, or other activities that support the mixed-use building. And so, you know, this, this was actually generated uh in discussions with, say, Charles Lane uh and the property uh behind it, so right now, the parking lot and the pavement basically goes to the property line. And, you know, there's a dumpster and, you know, whatever. Uh, that can remain, if they're, if they're, however, if they're putting a mixed-use building uh, on the property and they wanna, they need to put a thirty, uh they need to put a thirty-foot buffer now between um, you know, if that is gonna serve the mixed-use building, between the property line and, you know, what, what's happening. Uh, and so, you know, there's discussions about i- is this, you know, too much, you know, we don't require, we don't necessarily require this when there's other mixed-use buildings, we do require additional setbacks in our bylaw. Additional setbacks in our bylaw. For instance, when the office, an office park zoning or PRP zoning, uh, but it's a residential district, we actually have a fifty foot. Um, side or rear setback. It doesn't necessarily prescribe that it be vegetated and cannot be used for certain things. Um, so. You know, staff's idea is that this is a provision we'd want, given the. You know, we're allowing a lot of, you know, flexibility in height in the overlay and really want to encourage development along the street. So this is saying, you know what if? It only applies in a few instances. So it's a residential use in a residential district. So it, it's not for every residential property. It's only if there's a residential use. Um, and so we think this buffer is a good idea to help. You know, help limit some impacts for having, you know, redevelopment close to a neighborhood. Um, it could also apply.
Nate, if you're thinking of Charles Lane as the. Sort of the rationale for this. Everybody, you know, who abuts this, these, these properties. Along Charles Lane is already accustomed to having. You know, the drive and the dumpsters and everything pretty close to the property line. So. I guess I'm, I'm not sure why we would need to make that change. Uh, if. You know, just because somebody might put a mixed use building on the property. Jesse, do you have a comment about something like this?
Yes, yes, this section exactly. Cause I was reading and rereading the comment from, I guess from CRC and I. A little confused by what point was being made there. And my memory of why, partly why this happened was. Because yes, Doug, I agree that those abutters are currently used to that, but potential for a five story building instead of. What's there now? Was, I think, the part of the motivation to give a little more buffer because it would, could be a pretty dramatic difference and not. So, yeah.
Well, we've already, we've also, I think later we've, we've probably reduced the height. Any, you know, like a hundred and fifty feet with from the property line to three stories. So. I don't know. I mean, it just seems like.
That's a good point.
You know, we've, we're already way cutting back on the massing. So, you know. Doing this for the surface seems kind of. Negligible. Bruce, what do you think?
I, I kind of agree with you. Uh, it seems unnecessary to go this. I've read, I'm assuming it's Mandy Jo because. A lot of these comments seem to be individual comments. And, uh, and, and, and the, the comments, uh, that we received from the CRC. And I, I was parenthetically, I was kind of confused as, as to how we should take these because if they're individual. Views, they presumably don't, or we can't assume they represent the views of the CRC. And if they don't, then we don't know whether there's anything to be gained by. Uh, embracing them because it doesn't necessarily mean we could get a consensus between the two organi- the two bodies. But. Uh, but that aside, I. I think, uh, that with, with the reduction to three stories and so forth, it does seem as though these. Uh, these abutters are used to this kind of behavior. However, Nate did say in his piece that, uh, to the extent that this is, uh. Part of what would push development or redevelopment, I should say, toward the front, which is what we want. Then I kind of understand there's a, there's an ulterior motive, which actually does further the goals and objectives that we've had. So. There, whereas I, I agree with what both you and Jesse have said, I also understand that it. Might have the effect of achieving another objective that we have, which is strengthening the street frontage because. A lot of these parcels, this is one of them, and of course Big Y is the other. A solid exam, uh, example, really have huge parking areas in front of them. And buildings behind, and we really would like to reverse that.
Yeah, quickly, yeah, while you're talking about, you know, I, I drew thirty feet here. Off the property line and then, you know, line here. So. What we're saying is if a, you know, mixed use building were to occur. That this area can't be used to support the mixed use building with, you know, a drive aisle or dumpsters or things like that. You know, some of that is in the overlay, we have a pretty small setback. Uh, we could just change it to have a different setback. We could say a twenty foot. Rear setback and, you know, not prescribe the vegetation or screening or what it can't be. And then to the point about reducing height. What we're saying is if a mixed use building is within a hundred and fifty feet, so here's a hundred and fifty feet. It can only be three stories. And so you still could put a mixed use building. Pretty close here, but it'd have to be three stories. You get to five stories when you're outside the hundred and fifty feet or, you know, six stories or whatever it is. And so. You know, this property here on the corner would only be able to have a three story building. It was asked, you know, does this reduce the number of units that staff had thought about in the overlay? And I'll say I, it, it doesn't because when we considered a, a rough build out. I didn't, I considered these buildings as remaining and not even consider those as being redeveloped. And so when, you know, we were estimating that there could be. You know, a thousand beds or however many beds, twelve hundred beds and so many projects. It was a redevelopment of say the front of this or some modification, but not really. Coming back here with a, a mixed use building and keeping the surface parking here. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think the, that buffer is something that was discussed. There hasn't been a conclusion by the CRC. I think. Bruce writes, so some of those comments that were, um, provided yesterday or today. Haven't been agreed upon by the CRC. Staff has looked at them and I think there's. You know, some of the points can be, uh, could be incorporated. And so one would be. Uh, I'll go back to our, my, um. Word document is, um. If you like this idea of a buffer, the word vegetated is, you know, seems to describe something as opposed to, we could say a landscape buffer. Um, or something. If, if, if the planning board likes this language. So this is something we talked about and now you're seeing what it looks like. And so, you know, this is a point that can be, you know, talked about a bit more.
Oh, I've still got my hand up. Uh, I hadn't intended, but, uh, I think vegetated is okay. I can see that the, the Mandy Jo, I presume it's her said. Uh, that ma- maybe it could all be stoned and everything. And I think that doesn't, or zero scape, uh, I, I, I didn't think vegetated necessarily means it has to be. Well watered. It could be, uh, some kind of meadow and so forth. It could be vegetated. It could be landscaped. I don't really care. It should be one or the other.
Yeah, I, I agree. It could be landscaped. It doesn't make much difference. I also think with the hundred and fifty foot. Three story. We could reduce or eliminate the thirty foot buffer also, as you point out, Doug. I don't think we need both.
Yeah. Um, I see Pam Rooney's hand. Why don't I bring her over? Pam Field Sattler, can you bring over Pam Rooney?
Hi Pam.
Hi Pam.
Hi Pam.
Pam Rooney, forty-two Cottage Street.
Speaking as a citizen or as a counselor?
Um, I'm actually, well, I guess I'm speaking as a, um. As member of the CRC who had this discussion and I, I just wanted to double check when I looked at the. Measurement lines that Nate just showed you. My understanding had been that the hundred and fifty feet was actually from the nearest residential structure, not from the property line. And so his, the area of, the area of three foot, excuse me. Three story limitations is actually much smaller. Than, than what he was showing you in the diagram.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Anything else you wanted to say at this point?
Uh, it just that it, that it felt very important to have some sort of buffer. Uh, especially if it were to go to a mixed use building. As Nate said. As it currently stands today, it stands and people are used to that. But it's also a one and one and a half and two story building. If it went to anything taller than that, having a setback. An actual setback from the property line. Seemed to be important to some of the members of the CRC.
Okay, thank you.
All right, could we see the map again, Nate?
Sorry, yeah, I, thanks Pam for that clarification. I, I would say that, you know, if we wanted to, we could. We word this and say that there, you know, that the, the side or rear setback, when it abuts a residential use in a residential district. Shall be a minimum of twenty feet and provide screening. And then that could, that's it, right? And so you'd still have an increased setback, uh, be more than what's there now between, uh, that building. Uh, and then we, we could erase this other stuff in saying what it isn't. So you basically are saying you have a twenty foot setback. And there needs to be some screening. You know, and we're not saying that the whole setback then has to be screening, but we're saying there has to be some screening to the adjacent property.
You mean a setback of twenty feet to the building or to?
Yeah, well, right now we're saying that the side or rear setback is ten feet. So if they really wanted to, they could put a mixed use building ten feet from that property line.
I see.
And so I do think that we need to have an additional setback there.
Yeah, I mean, adjacent, so something like adjacent to a residential property, the setback would be twenty feet.
Or thirty feet. I mean, right now, if we go back, let me share my screen. It's, it's about thirty feet, the building. So, you know, do you want to bring a building closer? It's a pretty big property. So, yeah, here's the thirty foot mark. So the building's a little further than that. And right a hundred and fifty feet from the residential, from the unit. Not the property line. So then a hundred and fifty feet is, you know, in this location. You know, so if someone put a mixed use building. You know, thirty feet off the property line and a mixed use building here would be three stories.
Yeah.
And, you know, it'd be three stories here and then three stories up. This could only be three stories. And, you know, I think given the, the way this site is, you know, the orientation and solar and everything. It does reduce shadows. If we actually allowed a six story building to be here, then, you know, this, there's a lot of shade here. You know, if this was a different orientation, for instance, I don't think we necessarily need that hundred and fifty feet in that three floors, but given. You know, how the, the directionality of all this, then I, I think it makes sense.
Right. All right, uh, Bruce and then Jesse.
I was just saying, it's, I just bought the thirty feet. And I think I'll hold on my comment about the hundred and fifty feet until we get to it. Is it further in?
Yes.
Yes, I'll, I'll hold that because I've got a comment on that as well.
Okay, so one vote in favor of thirty feet.
Yeah, thanks. With, with this clarification, I think thirty feet is fine. Uh, not to be too nitpicky, but that one property where you did not draw the line, Nate. Would that little shed apply or how, how is the structure defined? So the one right middle.
So the, you mean the hundred and fifty feet or the?
Yeah, because there is that little structure way at the back of that one property.
We say a budding or it's a residential, um, dwelling.
Okay, so that wouldn't count.
Yep.
Okay.
So I guess I'm not clear what's happening with this.
I think, I think we said there needed, that, that we'd be okay with a.
Is it just, is it just a setback and not necessarily?
Setback of thirty feet, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna need twenty feet just for the fire department.
So you're thinking. Let me just do this. It could be this. And we. Get rid of all of this.
Yeah.
And it, you know, it's not prescribing any screening or anything, although that, again, that could happen through the permitting. That there, you know, the, the planning board could say, we want some screening behind this building, whether it be fencing or plantings.
Yeah. I mean, does that seem fine for every, I mean, we don't have the full board at the moment, but, uh. It seems fine to have several of us.
Uh, I, I think letting the, uh, the, the, the board, the permit granting agency. Uh, weigh in on, uh, screening, which typically is done without, uh. Uh, it, it becomes as part of the findings and so forth, I would say. I think, because it's gonna, I mean, we have the advantage here that we have essentially simply Charles Lane and that we, we are. Gonna, we're, we're, we're being, uh, I think led to think that we can actually be quite specific because it's such a limited. Specific area where we're talking about, but. I think we should pretend that this is a little more generalized and, and, and the, uh. And, and let the permitting granting agency figure out what's kind of screenings and, 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 uh. Uh, and so forth, this, this might need to be in a setback or along a setback.
So yeah, this might also apply to some properties on Route nine. So, you know, there's a, some residential uses. You know, the Klee Dickinson properties down on Route nine where this may also apply.
Well, I think letting these other things happen in there, I, I think is principally fine. That's not really the big problem here. Shading and other things are.
I'll keep moving down then. So we changed it to seventy feet, you know, sixty-five to seventy. I think that, that was seen before. Uh, here's this other provision. So any mixed use building with an exterior wall within a hundred and fifty feet of an abutting residential dwelling. On a lot in a residential district shall not exceed thirty-seven feet or three floors. And so again, it's the whole building. It's not like they can get outside this a hundred and fifty feet and then step the building up. You know, if we go back to the map, it's like if you're within, if you want to get to that setback. And you're within a hundred and fifty feet, that building has to be limited to three floors, um, you know, the whole building.
Is it the entire building or just the portion of the building within a hundred and fifty feet?
So it's the whole building. So that, that was a question that was asked. So if we. Go back here, right? You're asking like if the building was put here and then it goes outside the hundred and fifty. Could the part outside the hundred and fifty bumped up? And the way that's written, it, it's not. It seems kind of odd, like. You know. I guess we could say that. It just seems like, you know, really we want the development to be here. Do we really want someone to put a building here, come out forty feet and then the other forty feet become six stories? I mean, I guess if you want, I guess if we want to say that we could, but that's not how it's written.
Well, I, you know, I just, uh. I, I, I'm always worried about the cost of elevators. And, uh, you know, I mean. Why would I want to have to make a small three story building when I could? You know, include it with a taller building and then the same elevator can. Do the, you do, you know, all, all of the floors. Um, it's really the massing that we're worried about, right? Not the, the, the massing within proximity to a residential dwelling. And so.
Right, we could say that portion of a mixed use building. You know, or something that qualifies.
Yeah, I think, I think that, that to me would be more. Uh, logical, I guess I'd say. It, it's, it's, it's controlling what we actually want to control. Well, and I mean, and now I'm. I think, um, let's see.
Don't we have to take out the exterior wall language there?
Yeah, I think that's right. That portion of a mixed use building. Within, within a hundred and fifty feet of a residential dwelling. Shall only be. Yada, yada.
Yeah, sorry, I hadn't gotten that far. And so when we say in a budding residential dwelling, you know, it, it really is. You know, say, so it doesn't cross Route nine. That's not, that, that's not considered a budding, uh, in zoning. Uh, terms, it's really, you know, if it's, you know, touches property. So across streets doesn't count, uh, it's really. Uh, properties are touching. So, all right.
So, so. Given that, you know, usually the first floor is taller than the upper floors. Is thirty-seven feet adequate to? You know, if your first floor is, let's say eighteen feet and then you've got two floors at eleven. Then you're at forty feet. So I wonder whether we'd be better off just bumping that up a little more than half. You know, a little more. You know what I mean, Bruce?
Yes, but it seems to me that, uh, that the ten foot floor of floors is what I understand. Uh, if I were doing it, I would do nine if I could, because you don't want to add height where you don't need it. Uh, but ten foot is seems to be a, um, a pretty generous floor to floor allowance for residential. Um, and it wouldn't apply to the upper floor because, uh, you know, it's not load bearing and so forth. So. So I think twenty, that's twenty, and then you've got seventeen for the.
Seventeen for the first floor.
It seems, thirty-seven seems fine, but I think it's a, a very good question to have asked, Doug, so that we actually. Look at, like, forty is way too much.
Well, I will say we don't allow exceptions though. So, you know, if, they don't have to go to forty, right? That's the max. So if.
Well, you, you're right. They're, they're going to be driven to make it as, as, as low as possible because gratuitous height is. Is to gratuitous expense.
I mean, we don't, right, we don't, unlike say what happens elsewhere in the bylaw or zoning districts. You know, we don't, we don't allow a waiver or, um, and. You know, we don't, we don't allow a waiver or any changes. So. If we said thirty-seven and then they will say we needed thirty-seven and a half, they're, they just, they couldn't get there. I don't know, we could change this to thirty-nine. I don't know, whatever.
Okay, well, I guess it's something worth thinking about.
We, you know, mixed-use building is a defined term. We haven't been great in our bylaw about. Capitalizing defined terms. And so, you know, whenever we can, now we will.
Okay.
So one question, go back to your. Your, your Google map of that parcel. Along University Drive. In that area, in that, at this little mall. There's this swale that looks like it's a wetland.
Right.
And, and basically precludes you from having any street frontage.
Right.
So how does the? Street frontage requirement apply here?
Well, we, so. They would put it, you know, we have a setback anyways, and then. You know, we say, you know, I think we say, you know, it's really whatever, you know, so if there's a psych constraint like a wetland. They can't build in the wetland, so it's however close they can get. And they still have a street-facing facade. So if someone were to put a building here, there's still a street-facing facade that needs to have. The seventy-five percent to a depth, right?
Okay, all right. So you think that would still apply on this parcel?
Yeah, so we've. The way it's written now, and we can go on it a little bit later, but right, if say, say they were to redevelop this building here. This is the street-facing facade, so seventy-five percent to a depth of twenty-four feet needs to be.
Yeah.
You know.
And the same along Amity Street.
Uh, we don't have that provision for Amity Street.
Okay.
But let's just say this building, say this were the building. And it's a big property and they, they want to make this a mixy's building back here. This still is the street-facing facade. So we're saying that this still has to be seventy-five percent to a depth of twenty-four feet needs to be mixed-use as well. And so that was a, a discussion at the CRC. Would there be the ability to say? This is the total mixed-use or non-residential space required with these two buildings. Could you take some of this, maybe half of this space and put it on the front one? And have, you know, so you still have the total kind of total gross area, but it's reduced on the second building. And so in my word version. We. There is some language asking that or commenting on that, so.
Okay.
Get there. What seventeen four one two is saying that.
Nate, before you go forward, Jesse's hands up and.
Sure.
Uh, I wanted to, before we leave that area, Jesse?
Yeah, great, thank you. This has come up a couple of times. Over the, all these discussions around the commercial space and existing. Shops or, or trying to prevent the fate of the carriage shop shops. And again, I just want to. Ask, I guess, Steph, is there really no way we can encourage or require some kind of? Lower rent for existing properties or small businesses is, you know, can we be creative and really try and encourage that? I mean, look, I, just before, it was so great. He's already negotiating with those tenants to keep them there. Potentially new developers won't do that. So is there a way we can build this into this new plan? Because again, I think we've all agreed, the profit here is going to be in all the apartments most likely. And the commercial might be an afterthought. And if we can encourage. Small businesses and existing businesses to stay around, I think that would be a huge plus. I just don't know what those mechanisms are.
Yeah, that was a comment too. I don't think we can require it in zoning. That's getting too much into the use interior of the building. We could encourage it, and I'd say we can encourage it by keeping the seventy-five percent requirement for all mixy's buildings, whether or not they're on the front or the back, right? So the more, more non-residential space you have. The likelier is that some of that could be a lower rent space. But we can't say require that if the Hampshire Bike Exchange properties we developed, that, that the Hampshire Bike Exchange be put back in the new building. Right? We, what we have done is we said that the new building has to have this amount of. Space and then it's really, you know, we can encourage the applicant or developer. They could talk to the town manager, assessor to see what could happen, but it's really, to me, it's a, it's not a zoning. Discussion at that point, but I, I understand what people are saying in that worry. I would say, well, let's try to provide space to allow those businesses to remain. That's kind of how we could do it.
Um, I, okay, I see Fred.
Uh, yeah, I, I agree with. What Nate said, I. I understand the, the desire to essentially have. Affordable commercial space. But. I, I, I don't think you can get there in the zoning bylaw. Affordable housing. Those parameters have been around for a long time and. Developers, you know, like Barry Roberts and so forth, they know how to price those in to things. But affordable commercial, that's not. It's, it's a great idea, but I, I don't see how we can. How we can write it in. I think we have to just hope that the. That we create conditions that allow that to succeed in the market, but I think that's as far as we can go.
Thank you, Fred. Nate, let's keep, let's go on.
Sure, seventeen four one two, this is describing the area south of the post office. So all these parcels. Map thirteen D parcels two, three, five through seventy. Uh, is that whole southwest corner. We're saying the first or ground floor shall be exclusively occupied by any permitted non-residential use, other than parking. However, up to fifteen percent of the ground floor may be used as incidental or common space to support the use on the upper floors. And so, you know, this is a way of saying that in the Big Y Plaza, Ginger Garden. Autozone in those areas that if they want to redevelop using the overlay, they have to have a really high percentage, basically the whole ground floor being non-residential. Except for this incidental space.
Okay.
And the owners and operators of Big Y, both the owners and the operators said that they would, they support this. Um, so here's where there's a few. You know, iterations of language that. You know, is in response to comments and trying to clarify a few things. So we're saying multiple buildings and uses seventeen five one. Say more than one building. Uh, with any permitted use may be located on a single lot. So that's always been in there. The question is, okay, what does that mean if you have? You know, a mixed-use building and a non-mixed-use building, what follows the overlay and what doesn't? So there's been some language here, you know, more than one mixed-use building may be permitted on a single lot using the overlay district. I mean, that. I think, you know, it's implied that it's, you know, if we don't say no, then it's a yes, but if we want to clarify it, it doesn't hurt. Uh, more than one building permitted without the overlay district may be located on the same lot. As mixed-use buildings permitted with the overlay district. So, you know, clarification.
So you, so you propose to have all three of these sentences in this section?
Yeah, I, I think, so. You know, the building commissioner hasn't reviewed it necessarily. I think, to me, they don't hurt. They just, they clarify. I, I think that if they weren't there, we would say that the overlay allows this anyways, but I think they're just clarification.
Okay, so, so you would indent the last two?
Right, right.
Okay.
Seventeen five on one, additional mixed-use buildings on a single lot, whether or not they are adjacent to the street, shall provide the required percentage of non-residential use. On the street-facing facade. So that is what I just talked about. If it's behind the building. Kind of this, this, this markup down below is, is another idea. Additional mixed-use building, buildings permitted on a single lot behind a mixed-use building adjacent to the street. May reduce the non-residential space on the first or ground floor to half required amount. Provided that the other half be located in the mixed-use building adjacent to the street. I mean, it's just language that, you know, it's different. It's, it's either, it's either this. Or it's this. And so it's just trying to capture what, you know. Do you like that idea of having some flexibility of moving? The mixed-use requirement, if, you know, if there's a secondary building behind the first one.
Yeah, I mean, that, that works for those parcels that are. North of the post office.
Right.
Obviously, it doesn't work for south because you're already fully. And, and that southern requirement, those parcels you listed, are they all on the? West side of University Drive or are some of them on the east side?
On the west side. So if I go back to my map.
Okay.
Those parcels are. That's the easiest way to do this are. It's, it's just, it's, it's this, this, these properties here.
Okay, so the other side is not.
Right. So that, the versions I just read would be like, for instance. You know, if, you know, this site wherever, say this site were redeveloped and they put a building here. They put a second building here. Say I had shared parking over here. Right now, we're saying, right, seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent. Could they take some of this and put it in the first building is what that second. Statement had.
Okay.
And that's the discussion, I don't know.
I like that idea because I think it, it basically puts more of the non-residential use. Allows more of it on the front, on the, on the street frontage, which is, I think, clearly where we wanted, although some of it may be. So I think the, the, the lower. If you're choosing between seventeen point five one one and, and that piece below it, I think I would put the piece below it in in preference.
All right.
Yeah, Jesse had his thumbs up and I'm fine with that too.
All right.
And Johannes been very quiet tonight. Johannes, you're.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not feeling particularly well, so I'm, I'm listening in. I'm appreciating everyone's engagement.
You can always send comments to staff after the fact. Anyone can actually, so. Uh, for going down the product open space, we removed some language here. Uh, we consolidated one of the standards and conditions and so. Right now it says every product shall have provided, provide usable open space. We deleted on the inside or exterior of a building and some other things. You say product open space on the site shall be provided in areas that are not required parking, driveways. Multi-use path service areas or, or steep-sloped areas. There's some questions about what is, you know, what is? What does that mean? There's no, you know, parameter or metric there. So, you know, it's at the discretion of the permitting. Uh, permanent granting authority. Uh, you know, for instance, in the project we just reviewed is, are, are the roof decks in that south courtyard or the courtyard on the interior of the? Property or the building enough of open space? You know, when we've done this before, when we try to do the, the mixed-use building. Um, or BL overlay in downtown, we try to say like ten percent of something or, you know, some, some number. And it just seems like it gets complicated when you try to do that, but. You know, there's has some, has been questions about what is, what's a, what is, you know, what's enough usable open space? We made this phrase stronger, on the west side of University Drive, there shall be a minimum ten-foot wide multi-use path for public access and use. Between the front of any building and the property line. And so staff talked with attorney and a developer and, you know, we would, for instance. On the access drive, there's easements there now that has to, it has to be vehicular access. And so it's easy enough. If you can work through University Drive and extinguish those easements like Barry's doing on the corner, you still have that space to be turned into pedestrian access. Uh, and through easements or agreements, the town can maintain that and, you know. The town does this in other spots where sidewalks enter onto private property through easements. An agreement. So it's not, there's been some questions about that. I think we can require it. Tom Reedy said, sure, go for it. It's not, not a big obstacle to development.
Okay.
Uh, you know, before I was saying something like. You know, there should be a multi-use path, but we made it shell and we, you know, defined it a little bit stronger. Uh, we say the planting of street trees shall be required. We clarified, you know, the whole section seven point zero doesn't apply in terms of parking. I think that had been there. Uh, you know, but an applicant is required to submit a parking utilization study and a parking management plan. So that the permitting authority can determine enough off-street parking is provided. Uh, design guidelines. Uh, we clarified a few of these. So we, we say, to the extent feasible, a majority of the street-facing facade. Shall be built along the length of the lot frontage, you know, so the width of the lot. And be generally located along the minimum front, front setback line to reinforce a sidewalk street edge. And so, Doug, to your point, if there's wetlands or something that make it, they have to step, have the building back further, then that's not feasible. And so you have the building as, you know, where it can be located and across the lot as much as possible. But, you know, if that's not the case. Then you have the buildable portion. And so. Seventy University Drive. Uh, which isn't shown here. Uh, the area is a little older. Uh, you know, the seventy University Drive was put where there's, say there's wetlands and so the building is. It's something like this, and you could say, well, why isn't it built across like this? And it wasn't feasible because there's wetlands. And so the building was built so that, to the extent feasible, there is a street-facing facade. You know, I don't, I don't know. You know, if we didn't have that provision, I think what someone could do, even if there weren't wetlands, they could put a building, you know, back here. Or something and not really up along the frontage and along the front of the property. And so. That condition is really trying to get buildings to be developed, you know, al- along a streetscape.
So. When you get back to your, to your draft. You had some language about additional buildings on the lot, additional mixed-use buildings. I'm, I'm wondering whether you need upfront a statement like, everything I'm about to say concern is, applies to the. First or the primary mixed-use building on the lot. And then. You know, then you can say, well, in one instance, there's a, some language about an additional building.
Well, is that, is that what we want? So say there is a pretty big property and you could have two mixy's buildings. I know Pam loves it when I, when I annotate, but if, um, say this is the street and it's a big property. And they put one mixy's building here. Wouldn't we want another mixy's building here too? So to the extent feasible, they do this. Otherwise, you know, they could do this.
Okay, all right.
They could do like this, and then this becomes parking. And I'm, I'm not sure that's what, how, how we'd want that to occur. You know, even like Tom Reedy's first design, they had the main building. And then a narrow building. Like that still works, right? Because a majority is still built out along the front setback line.
Okay, all right, I'll drop that.
No, it's a good, it's a good discussion. I don't know.
Well, I wasn't thinking about having two buildings right on the street. I was thinking about, you want to make sure that. All of this stuff applies to the first building and that it's along the street.
Or the second, right? It depends on.
Okay, all right, no.
So we, we changed everything, say, say the street-facing facade, that was a, a, a previous change, but consistency in terms of. You know, the street-facing facade shall have variations in architecture, detailed change in plane. Oh, I'm still doing this. That surface parking shall be, you know, on the side or. Rear of a building at least thirty feet from a public way and that shall be screened from adjacent properties. You know, this thirty feet, you know, really, we don't want it to be closer than a building. Um, you know, so, you know, if the building, if the setback is twenty-five feet or something, we don't want parking to be in front of the building. I don't think there's an issue here, but. We deleted this, uh, one condition about louvers and other things can't be visible. We kind of say it here. Already rooftop mechanical equipment shall be screened. And then we say here, loading docks, dumpsters, mechanical equipment. Uh, utility meters, we say, except as required by the public utilities, shall be located in low visibility locations. And so. You know, whatever is in red here is new, sometimes. You know, whatever is in red here is new. Sometimes public utilities are pretty. Strict about their requirements, but we, you know, want to have some way to negotiate or discuss it. And so. You know, those are the changes right now to the amendment.
Okay. Well, okay, so I think we've got kind of a consensus from folks that are here. You know, I mean, if we wanted to tonight, could we just say, yep, we endorse this, let's send it to town council and. And you can write up your report on our public hearing?
Yep. So I think the, you know, what the CRC is meeting next week. And so really what what's happening is we presented a draft. To town council that was referred back and that draft was say the the base version of this. And what the planning board and CRC will do is say, well, we recommend. This, you know, the changes. So we would, you know, it'd be a clean version, a track change version. So what would go back to council would be. We recommend what's here. You know, the differences and the new changes. The CRC may recommend something different.
Right, I mean, we can have, we can each each body can have its own recommendations, right?
You can though, yep.
Well, I feel like we're pretty, we're pretty much there.
If we if we were, I would just want to um. Just make the few changes we talked about. Sorry about the scrolling.
Jesse, you want to talk before he's finished or not?
No, I'll wait till he's done.
Okay.
We we're okay with this. I think it was this buffer here. We were going to delete this.
Yeah.
That that portion, we like that. We like these two statements. And we would delete this. And I can change the format, but we like this idea of having. In the product open space, we we, you know, these changes here, we're okay with in terms of. You know, having the permit granting authority determine what is kind of the usable, the right amount of usable open space.
Yeah.
Parking, yeah, so there's no parking requirements. Like it was asked again and I don't, I guess people are incredulous to think that we are not doing that. So I like I said before, I think. Given the location of University Drive and how we regulate parking on street in the neighborhood and what's available. I think this provision works. I wouldn't necessarily say let's have the same kind of parking standard in East Amherst. I think for University Drive it works, right? In other parts of town, I I would have maybe a different standard.
Okay.
And we like this to the extent feasible, a majority of the street facing facade will be built along the length of a lot frontage. Is that? How long did we say the width? I, you know, I just want to make sure it's clear enough. There's a clear, we like the width or length better. Any? Language there?
Well, I mean, could you also say that the the street facing? Facade shall be located at the. At the setback line or something?
We do say and and be generally located at the minimum front setback line.
Okay.
I think when we when we talk about lots, we talk, we usually talk about the frontage width. So I think probably width is better than length. But it's a blind, close to a line ball. Nate, I was going to say, what's the reason my hand is up if I'm butting in on Mr. Chair, but just to say that. As far as the parking is concerned, I think what we've seen tonight is evidence that what we're proposing is. Is intelligent and responsible. Because the applicant Barry Roberts has made a determination. Of what parking needs and if people are concerned that people will build buildings with no parking, we just have to say, well. The the first cab off the rank has not demonstrated that kind of. It's not not is not inflicted, is not performing self inflicted wounds by not providing enough parking for the needs that they. Themselves think they need. And we recognize that their. Capacity to assess parking needs in this location is probably better than ours, so. I think that's the justification for the. The seventeen five three one and five three two, I think. We've talked this through a lot, but I think we're not seeing any evidence that we're. Have made the wrong, are making an incorrect recommendation here.
Okay. Bruce, I'll put your hand down for you.
I will say that there's um. There's like a, you know, a deeded. Restriction on the number of curb cuts on University Drive. And there's been some questions about that. For seventy University Drive, it was as easy as going, getting the planning board approval and then town meeting to say that, you know, the planning board has to say in DPW, it looks good. And so in the future, if something happens and we need another curb cut access on University Drive. You know, the the way the deed is written, the planning board needs to approve it and then the town needs to, but. It doesn't seem like that's actually another. A barrier. It's, you know, it's really on a case by case basis. And so. You know, that would come about if the access drive is eliminated in parts and all of a sudden there's a property that needs access. Directly to Route or to University Drive because of the way. You know, developments occurred on either side, then they could propose to have a direct curb cut. You know, or have some other creative solution on how to access it with vehicles.
Okay. Alright, Bruce. Bruce, you're muted.
Thanks, I'm sorry about that. I I would move that we submit the document as amended this evening. As our recommendation to the to the to the council for the tech for the for the. For for promulgation is the intended overlay by law. Or some words to that effect.
Okay, great. Jesse.
I would second that.
Alright. How about other board members? Any other comments from board members other than that we're tired of talking about this overlay? Okay, one last. Okay, Johanna.
I was just gonna say it's a long time coming and there's a lot of detail in here that. You know, we didn't have worked out six months ago, so kudos to everybody who engaged and. Here's here's hoping, fingers crossed that it advances policy in Amherst.
Right. Okay, so I would like to ask the public if there are anybody who wants to make a public comment about this before we vote. Can we bring over Pam Rooney?
Hi Pam.
Hi Pam. I'm Pam Rooney, forty two Cottage Street. I'm speaking as a resident. I am continuing to think about the one hundred and fifty foot setback from a residence. For maintaining a three story height building. Given your recent rewording of that to say that portion of the building within a hundred and fifty feet is. Three stories, it means that just outside of that hundred and fifty foot mark, the the building can go to six stories. And I have to admit that I am thinking about this from a very personal perspective and that is that. I get to look at Hendrick Place Building, which is five stories. And it is four hundred feet away from my from my window. The sun sets literally at least a half an hour earlier for me in my office. Than it does for the the rest of the town because that building does in fact block my. Light at at four hundred feet. If I imagine a six story building. Nearly, you know, a hundred and fifty feet away from my neighbor's house, for instance. It is, it is very much. In the same tone as the forty R. Blocks that were being proposed a number of years ago where it was five stories within, you know. Literally with a twenty foot setback from residential area. So I. If you are, if you have the energy to talk about that subject for. A couple more minutes, I would greatly appreciate that kind of consideration. Thank you.
Alright, thank you Pam. I don't see other hands from members of the public. Board members, any comments in response to Pam's comment? Jesse, then then Bruce.
I think that's a very valid point. I mean, we can look at the map quickly again. Sorry to labor this, but.
Yeah. Bruce, what were you gonna say while Nate brings up the map?
I was going to say. Pam mentioned the sun sets. Well, the the we could make that setback go from a hundred and fifty to. The whole of the lot and it's. It was, it's, it's, it's not going to make a huge amount of difference. It's going to make some difference clearly. But at some point, a five story building on that lot is going to make a difference. They've 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 got pretty good sun up until late afternoon. And of course, this is only late afternoon in. In winter, in summer, the that won't create any shadowing in those houses. So it's a portion of the year, this time of the year. So I don't know, we could make it go from a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet or. And maybe that's what Jesse wants to explore, so let's do that. But I think it would be a matter of deciding whether a hundred and fifty should be more and how much more.
So so my my first thought. After listening to Pam was, I'm not sure any. Thing above three stories in that whole lot wouldn't cause the same problem, right?
Yeah.
So if you put five stories even just way on the edge, which will be.
Yep.
Four hundred feet away. It's the same issue. So unless we remove that whole lot from this overlay, I don't know how to accomplish. That. But but I definitely understand the point being made.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the. The impact. I guess I'm, you know, we're trying to balance competing interests here. And at least, at least we all started with the objective of trying to have a lot of. You know, a lot of houses or a lot of beds down here. And that that sort of necessitates that. I mean, we did get any, we did, it does remind me, we got a. Public comment at one point from, I think it was Cindy Jones, who lived up the hill here. Who was saying, you know, if there's anywhere in town that. A tall building would probably be easily more, most easily tolerated. It's down here at the bottom of the hill. So to that extent, you know, this is. Probably the best. The least detrimental place we could do this. Bruce, you still have your hand up and then Fred.
I do. I'm also noting that in many lots, this this kind of shadowing and shading happens because people plant trees. And sometimes it's their own trees even that they plant carelessly and stupidly that end up shading. But we could create this thing and make it a three story right across the whole lot. And somebody could plant not very tall trees along the the buffalo and defeat the whole purpose. So I'm inclined to leave it the way it is, although I appreciate Pam forcing us to be a little more deliberate here.
Yeah. Fred.
Yeah, I had to unmute myself. Yeah, I I agree also. I have a. A lot of sympathy for. What Pam is is confronting. But. I I don't know where this ends. And I I. I I think to to follow through on this logically results in the tail wagging the dog. And I don't think that's good public policy. So I have a lot of sympathy for this, but I think the way we've got it is correct.
Alright. I'm basically in the same camp with Bruce and Fred.
So the way it reads now is that, sorry, that, you know. You could have a building within a hundred and fifty feet, it's limited to three floors. Once it hits a hundred and fifty feet, it can jump up. You know, so you know, that that's. That's what it says and that's, I just want to make sure everyone understands that.
Yep. And Johanna, you are fine with where we're at? Jesse, anything else you want to say? I guess we, you know, Pam, we hear you. Okay, alright, in that case. We have a motion on the floor. A yes vote is to recommend this current draft to town council for enactment. And I'll just go through our our list here. Bruce?
I'm a yes.
And Fred?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Johanna?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. That's five in favor to absent. Alright, so. Nate, I guess, do you prepare a sort of a, it's probably a relatively brief report? Is that right? Along with this track track changes?
Yeah, this will be discussed with the CRC next week and then, you know, when it. And then when it moves to council, there'll be a memo and right, a track, you know.
Yeah, I meant the memo rather than the report, but. I I'm not sure you need to, you know, recap all seven meetings in which we talked about this.
Yeah, it used to be that the memo would be like twenty pages and I'm not sure anyone wants to read twenty pages.
Yeah, they can go back to the minutes for those seven meetings if they want to. Get the blow by blow. Bruce?
I recall you, perhaps Doug and others maybe who were at the or viewed the town council discussion on this, which I I confess I have not. Being surprised that there was. Less discussion about the fundamental objective of creating housing. Then you, you know, given where we started from and so forth, and that that was surprising to you. So Nate, I'm encouraging that. Your report front and center, you know, in the first paragraph, make a. A a a very powerful statement that this is what's driving this and 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 make sure that people understand that that's the objective. And and at least make sure it's unfolded into the deliberation proper.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Bruce.
Nate, do you need anything else from us on this topic?
No, thanks, that's good.
Okay. Alright, moving along, it is now nine forty two. Let's see if we can. Run through our remaining business pretty quickly so that Johanna can get to bed. We did the, we did the. Old business with the construction logistics plan. Do we have any old business not reasonably anticipated? Pam or Nate? Nothing. How about for new business? Anything just come up?
Uh, no.
Alright. For me, A and R subdivision, I think there was one in the package, right?
There is one and I'll do my best to pull up these documents.
This was dividing an existing. Taking two parcels and changing the boundary between them, right?
That is correct. So it's twenty six and thirty four Shumway Street. Which are owned by the same person. And this is it here. Can you see it?
Yep.
Perfect. So it's these two lots right here, lot one and lot two. This is the existing dividing line right now that this would go away. And so they're just changing this parcel line here. So the owner of the two lots is adjusting the lot line so that this one has a little more property. Um, this already has a rental unit on it, and there is talk about trying to fit a duplex also on this property. Um, and this is the, sort of the homestead of the family that owns this property.
All right, and so the question before the board is whether you're all okay with me signing this, that subdivision approval is not required. And it's clear both, both parcels have street frontage. Doesn't look like you need to build a subdivision uh, access road. Fred?
Sorry about that, I wasn't, I was muted. Yeah, I, I don't understand how you're gonna add two units to, uh, a fourteen thousand five hundred foot units parcel that already has one. This is the general residence zoning district. Uh, it looks to me like he's, uh, proposing to add one unit to make a total of two. Am I, am I missing something?
Well, really, that part isn't the concern for us tonight, Fred. Um, this individual went to the building department to try to seek permitting and was told that they needed to seek an A and R because they didn't have enough property um, on Lot Two, so this is what they have chosen to do. So they, what, what we're looking at is whether they can move that lot line, and if there is enough, um, coverage and frontage. Nate actually pointed out, um, that Lot Two is already a non-conforming lot in terms of frontage, but they're actually decre- Nate, correct me if I'm, if I'm saying this incorrectly, that they're actually decreasing the non-conformity. Um, so it's allowed, the building commissioner has looked at this and said it's okay.
Yeah, I, I think Fred, right, so, you know, if you look at this, uh, twenty-five, they, they're giving themselves twenty-five hundred square feet additionally for one, for one other unit. You know, the, the owner may want to, you know, try to get a third unit by some other, you know, s- some permitting, but that's not, I'm, I'm not sure about that.
Okay. All right, um, all right, so Fred, I assume you're not objecting to this being a, a
No.
Effective change in the parcel boundaries.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it, the way it was presented, it seemed very strange, but, yeah, he can do it. Uh, he may not be able to do what he thinks he can do, but he can do it.
Yeah. And, and I assume Nate and Pam that he hasn't just drawn a straight boundary front to back a little farther to the left because he wants to maintain the hundred feet of frontage on parcel one. That is what he needs from, by the zoning.
Right.
Correct.
So he's really not allowed to do that without a permit. Okay, all right, well then, uh, Pam will make it, make a time for me to come and and sign the A and R.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving along, the time is nine forty-eight. Uh, do we have any upcoming ZBA applications that we should hear about?
Um, I don't have any to report.
Okay, Fred, by the way, I just lowered your hand, and I hope that was okay, that was a legacy. All right. Um, any SPP, SPR, SUP applications we would want to hear about?
Uh, the Jewish, Jewish community of Amherst has submitted a site planner view application for solar canopies over their parking lot, and then some other small site changes in terms of, um, equipment location or things, so that'll be coming to the board in February likely.
Okay. All right, um, time is nine forty-nine, Planning Board Committee and Liaison Reports. Um, Bruce, anything for PVPC?
No.
All right, Jesse, Housing Subcommittee.
Uh, two, two, two quick things, uh, the Subcommittee is helping to bring discussion of footnote M to the planning board as soon as we can get on the agenda, uh, I think we're hoping sooner than later.
And, and what's the, what's the general?
Yeah, we would like to propose that the, uh, square footage in footnote M returned to its original format, which was six thousand, it's currently at four thousand. Uh, and we're thinking about the new ADU, like, right, uh, law going into place and not suddenly having three units on properties where there could be two, just to sort of limit the infill density in that way. Um, that, that was our discussion, so I will write up something and get it for you to put on the agenda whenever we can.
Okay.
Nate, you're gonna help us figure out why it changed from six to four thousand in the first place, which no one seemed to really understand what the rationale was. So we're gonna look back and try and figure that out as well.
Okay. Pam, is there any reason we couldn't put that on the agenda next time? Do we have very much, uh, coming?
For, um, February five?
Yeah.
Nope, I think that it could go on there, Nate, what do you think?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, why don't we do that?
And with your permission, Doug, can I have a quick show and tell? I can share my screen very briefly.
Go ahead. Um, Nate, do you need us to do something?
Nope.
No, he should be able to.
Okay.
So we had some discussion about ADUs and whether property owners are gonna rush to do them. This ad went up today for eighty-eight Aim, Aim Street, and you can see my highlighted text in the ad, perfect for an ADU. Well, it's now a selling point for our houses in town.
Yeah, I know that, that's just a couple of houses away from me.
So it is, it is gonna happen, to what degree, we'll see, but that was very obvious to me, and a little disappointing, is what it is.
Okay. All right, um, Karen is not here to give us a DRB update, uh, I really don't have any report of chair. Nate, anything from you or Pam for staff?
Yeah, I'll just say a few things, the ADU piece, you know, we're kind of in a, a wait and see. The state had a pretty big hearing earlier this month in terms of number of, um, speakers, and then comments that were received. And they're hoping, uh, I think actually in the next week, within the next week to publish updated rules and regulations, and that'll help guide staff in terms of what to do. We did ask the town attorney about the student home definition and a few other provisions we had in the, you know, we were proposing in a, in the ADU bylaw, and they said, given the, the draft rules and regulations, most of those were considered unreasonable. Uh, even, you know, additional dimensional standards that, you know, an ADU couldn't be in the fronts, you know, between the front of the home and the, in the property line, so it couldn't be in the front yard. So, you know, the way they were written, you couldn't have any, you know, kind of stricter guidelines or conditions than you would for single family homes, and so, you know, we're kind of, we're waiting to see what happens. Uh, the building commissioner attended a, a workshop in other towns are doing the same thing, just because it was, it was such a moving target, right, we didn't, it just didn't seem worth to keep trying to revise the ADU bylaw if the regulations will change a lot, so when they do, we'll jump on it, um, we do have a bylaw in place, and the building commissioner can still ask for things that we ask in our bylaw that's not inconsistent with the state law. Um, I agree, we've had more inquiries in the last week or two than, you know, like, you know, a half dozen or more people calling to ask that seem serious about, um, moving forward with an ADU.
Okay, Jesse?
Thanks, uh, there was something else related to both ADU and Housing General I wanted to mention. And I can send the link to staff to send around to the planning board, but UMass announced today, had a press release about a pretty a big, long-term housing, uh, effort. It's basically a request for private public partnerships for a, a very long-term, large vision plan. So I'll send the link for you all to see.
Yeah, that, yeah, that is pretty neat. Um, uh, yeah, so, um, two other things, the downtown design standards is still ongoing, just so people can hear it, you know, there'll be more meetings coming up. Uh, Dodson and Flinker is still working on like the vision statement and goals, they're getting refined with the working group, and so I think they have a really good understanding of kind of how to frame everything, and now they're trying to get into the, the, the nuts and bolts and actually get some, some standards and conditions happening. The housing production plan is moving forward, so thanks for all the comments on the, uh, on the needs assessment. The consultant is now working on the other parts of the plan, including strategies and goals, and, and that's something the planning board will look at again. Uh, and then the open space and recreation plan, staff is working on an update to that. Uh, and maybe in February, uh, we, we'll bring, uh, the, we have kind of final draft goals and strategies and objectives that we could bring back to the board. Uh, the plan itself is, keeps growing, it's a good plan, it's always surprising how long they get, uh, but the planning board would then also, uh, be asked to review the whole plan probably in March or so.
Okay, Bruce?
Um, I'm just not reminded myself that tomorrow night, there's a, a housing panel, uh, at the Town Hall. I think it's about in-person and Zoom, uh, thing, it's, uh, Nate, you probably know more about this, Jesse, maybe you do too. I just wanted to say that I'm intending to attend this thing at Town Hall, it's, uh, it's, I think Mindy Dom's, uh, involved. It seems to be a, um, uh, gathering triggered by the Healy, uh, um, housing bill, this colossal bill that the administration has put through, which the ADU is a, actually a small fraction of, right? And, uh, so I just thought I'd mention that, uh, just so people can choose either to tune in on Zoom or not, or go, but it seems that, uh, there's gonna be quite a few, um, parties involved, eh, eh, and so it might be a good time to, to see who the players in the affordable housing game in town are. Um, it's more than just the trust, it's more than us and, and, and others, so I, I, I thought I'd, I thought I would attend.
What time is that?
Seven o'clock, I believe, till nine.
Yeah, it's a hybrid format, so you can, um, you could be able to join by Zoom or attend in person, it's a panel. The League of Women Voters is sponsoring it, and then there's been cosponsors, but it's about, it's about housing. Um, different organizations will be represented as part of a panel and have, you know, give presentations and then maybe have discussion.
Okay.
Jesse, I might say something to it at the next Housing Subcommittee, if you choose.
Okay, time is nine fifty-seven, and I think we are finished for tonight. Next meeting is February fifth. And seven, six thirty still works, Nate, for every, for you? Okay. All right, see you in a couple of weeks.
Well done, Doug.
Good on you. Good night.
You all, good night.
Thanks for staying with us, Johanna.